Good afternoon, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for the District of Squamish for October 26, 2021. I am councillor Doug Race, acting mayor this month, and as such, I will be chairing this meeting. Welcome Squallin, Chris Collet, Glasgow, Homish, Awame. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. I'd like to motion to adopt the agenda. I don't anticipate any changes to the printed agenda. Move councillor French, second mayor Elliott. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first report is the Public Safety Services Review, so I will turn it over to our CIO, Ms Glenday. Go ahead, please.
Thank you Chair, and good afternoon council and members of the public. Thank you for your attention this afternoon. I'll be presenting the Public Safety Services Review. Mr Dan Pageley, our acting general manager of community services, I do believe is joining us, but is on vacation, and so I offered to present this. It has been quite a team effort, so we look forward to presenting it to you. The objective of today is to give you a summary of the review. It's quite a comprehensive document, so I won't go through it in absolute detail, but highlight some of the key components. Secondly, the pertinent action plan updates that staff have been working on, that we can provide to you in the community, and then as well, relevant service level change proposals that council has seen in the budget. Five-year financial plan proposal, but some more detail related to the Public Safety Services departments. With me on the line and in person are the leads for our different departments of the Public Safety Services. From RCMP, it's Inspector Dykstra is on the line. We also have Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley, Amanda Daly, our administrative supervisor, probably don't have the title right, Chief Bill Stoner, and as I mentioned, I do believe Mr Dan Pageley is on the line as well. A brief history of this project, so back in 2020, the district staff commenced a project to create a Public Safety Master Plan, looking at the interoperability and services that the Public Safety Departments provide. As we all remember, and we're still dealing with it, COVID occurred and continued much longer than any of us anticipated. In addition, we had some leadership changes in the community services and protective services area, and then more emergent priorities through 2021 did get in the way, so we had quite a delay. The consultants that we worked with, Cornerstone Planning Group, provided a final draft in late 2020, and due to all of these other priorities and delays, staff finally dug back into this report in fall of this year. The benefit of time and hindsight and changing context in just one short year led us to create some substantial edits to the report, which you can see in the final draft that's attached to the council report. The main edit you'll notice is we have changed the title, so we as staff decided that as a master plan, it didn't quite hit the mark. There were some limitations to this report, namely a shared community vision of Public Safety Services. Specific community engagement was not part of the original scope of the project or terms of reference, and same engagement with our community service agencies, that especially through COVID, we have continued to grow and nurture relationships and really leverage the power of those partnerships. Additionally, as we continue to prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion at the district, again, this was not in the original terms of reference from a year ago, so in one short year, the scope of what should have been in the project became much more clear. Also, what's not part of this master plan, or sorry, what's part of this report but will be forthcoming are more in-depth strategic plans for each of the departments. So as such, staff, we've called it now a services review, and it does provide quite a bit of value if we look at it in that context. It's really a snapshot in time when the information was gathered for this report, so it was a robust internal review of the different departments in our Public Safety Services areas. Extensive employee engagement in all of those areas, research into all of the districts' reports, you'll see a list of that in the report, as well as reaching out to other Public Safety Service agencies in the Cedar Sky corridor. It really offers a cross-functional department lens, which is key for us going forward, and provides some valuable recommendations and action plans that staff can continue to leverage. So you've heard me talking about the four different departments that we refer to in terms of Public Safety Services, and those are our policing contract with the RCMP, it's our bylaw enforcement and animal control group, Squamish Fire Rescue, and then our emergency management department. So the purpose of this report at the outset was ultimately to review the current and future resource capacities for our Public Safety Services, and then develop recommendations in terms of those resources and services in a short and longer-term horizon. Three goals are articulated in this services review that were developed with the consultant and staff at the time, and those are to develop public safety services that are responsive and proactive in the community, that the resources are strong and interconnected, and developing a resilient organization in terms of our Public Safety Departments. These are all of the areas that the review reviewed, so looking at the services that each department provides, their delivery model, community partnerships that exist, site and facilities, fleet and equipment, IT and communications, and then outlining some key challenges that each of the departments articulated they're experiencing. Each of the areas in the report do articulate some specific challenges that then lend themselves to recommendations and action plans, and for the purpose of today and time, I was not going to go through each area, but what did emerge were particular themes, and one theme that probably is not a surprise to anyone is the population and visitor growth that Squamish is experiencing, and this obviously creates pressures in terms of service demands for each of our Public Safety Service Departments, whether it's new residents, visitors, especially in our peak season, and next week, council and community will be hearing our update on our visitor and camping management plan and how our summer season went. There are also opportunities, of course, with development and the growth of a community, the complexity of the demands, so especially through COVID and even before, of course, there is mental health involved now in a lot of policing responses, complexity of investigations with both bylaw as well, it becomes more complex as our population grows. Climate change is something that is definitely impacting all of us, and especially emergency management, when we talk about response and planning. Staff resourcing and retention as we grow as a community and an organization, and then as we continue to improve our technology and our systems cross-functionally. So these were the themes that came up for all four, which is important to keep in mind as we move forward with the recommendations and action plans. The report also provides a model for projected resources, and when they talk about resources in this report, it's people, it's staff, so it didn't talk about necessarily facilities or fleet, but this is all numbers of staff. And what's important to note is that these numbers are based on projected population out of our employment lands model, and then some limited data around service demands, so calls for service. The consultants then added what they refer to as a normative factor, and this is essentially a subjective number to manipulate the data, to add in factors that are well, subjective. So if I use an example, and just give me one second, and I'll pull one up here. What's interesting is if you look at the RCMP, the normative factor is one, so ultimately what they're saying is despite population growth and service demand growth, no other complexity is added in there to increase the need for resources. That said, when we speak to staff, we are learning that evolving police standards, more detailed investigative requirements are pushing the need for more resources. So there are limits to this model, I just want to add that in for council, that this provides a picture for us to see that yes, with population growth, staffing resources are increasing, but there are also limits to it, so we don't want to necessarily hang our hat on it, but it is a good picture for us to help as we go into our more detailed strategic planning. A more clear example is if we look at fire rescue, so the normative factor is beyond one, so rather than a linear calls for service and population calculation, they increase the normative factor because as the downtown or the Squamish itself densifies, the complexity of response will increase, so it's less linear and there's a normative subjective increase. Again, these are just models to help us inform future strategic and detailed planning for It's important to note as well that the original report included expenses, so costs for employees were included in the report, with something that goes out this far-reaching and does have a subjective lens on it, and also in a short, I keep calling it a short year, I guess some people would say it's been really long, it depends on how you look at it. The data, the numbers that they were using for budget are no longer accurate, and we felt that to provide those numbers outside of the context of the overall financial planning would not serve its purpose, so rather, what we're doing and what we'll speak to is as we bring in strategic, more robust strategic planning for resourcing of staff and business cases, we'll incorporate those expenses into our long-term financial planning, and council will be able to see that runway going forward. There's a services model recommended in this report to create a public, this is called Public Protective Services in the report, we are referring to it as public safety. This was the infographic that the consultant did provide to us, we've already made some amendments, so as an example, we are proposing in this budget year that we hire a director of public safety, not a general manager, to oversee Public Safety Services on its own. Currently, it's also underneath a general manager that's responsible for recreation. The administrative supervisor in the RCMP square as an example is still an outstanding decision, we haven't proposed that at this time, so there are some nuances and some differences here, but ultimately what the report recommends is a Public Safety Services Coming out of this report are a series of action plans for each department and then public services overall, and in the report, council and the public can see, since these action plans have been put into place in the past year, what staff have been actioning, so the shorter-term, more urgent actions that needed to happen in advance of being able to complete this report for final delivery to council. So namely, in fire rescue as an example, it was apparent that the on-call duty schedule for the deputy chief and the fire chief was not sustainable, they were each on-call 50% of the time, and as well, leadership requirements for the growing department, so a third deputy fire chief was approved in last year's budget and hired. There are a number of other updates that I can walk through with council, and I have the list here. Too many papers. So RCMP, some key highlights, one of the recommendations was more outreach, community policing, especially as it related to our increase in visitors, and as council and hopefully the public are now aware, there is a management roundtable that is meeting regularly with a number of different agencies in the district, and it has been proven effective so far in addressing how we manage and promote our visitor and camping and do it in such a way that's effective. Recommended combining guarding and a clerk position, which has happened, that classification exists, unfortunately, the position currently is vacant, but that said, the service level increase that's coming to council, and you'll have seen the additional appendix, is this position supporting the regular members and the different watches at RCMP, so leveraging funds to support the police members as opposed to hiring just one police member, so that's a shift that's happening. In fire rescue, as I mentioned, we hired the second deputy fire chief, Sean, and in our five-year financial plan, there is a business case and personnel is proposed, and as well, the fire department management software, I always get my acronyms wrong, IT is looking after that, and we did discuss that in budget previously, and there's an RFP to update this in 2023. Bylaw and animal control updates this year, thanks to the BC Restart Grant, we were able to fund two community police, sorry, community patrol officers, and next week, you'll hear more about that when we provide the update on our visitor and camping management plan. The reinstatement of the bylaw manager has occurred, where we are currently recruiting for that position. The animal shelter, since writing, the initial writing of this report has since closed, the building it was in was end of life, that spot is needed for Public Works Department, and a request for proposals for service agreement has gone out to the community, although we have yet to include a service agreement. Calls for Service is a program that is going to be integrated with our TTP in 2022 in terms of better automating how we deal with our complaints and calls for service with bylaw. And last, emergency management, we have resourced with an assistant coordinator that was back in 2020, IT equipment to help them work more remotely is ongoing and has happened, ongoing planning and community outreach is a part of their mandate, and they're working on that, and collaboration with the region has been paramount, and through the wildfire season specifically, and planning for potential evacuation is one example where Megan and her team have done a very good job of that. Overall, recommendations for the Public Safety Services areas is to continue with our multi-year strategic plan, so this is what I'm referring to when I say the more robust data-driven planning for staff resourcing and other resourcing, as well as specific strategies for each of the four areas. RCMP and fire rescue both have multi-year plans now that they are working from and will be updated, RCMP is forthcoming, fire rescue will be early in next year, and then staff, we are working with bylaw and animal control and emergency management to create multi-year strategic plans for those areas in 2022. We do continue to budget for staff resourcing and growth, and we do continue to improve our admin and our technology systems incorporating Public Safety Service Departments. One great update to present to council, although Hillary stole a bit of my thunder this morning, is the new Community Resilience Committee, and this is something that has come out of engaging with a number of folks here, and it involves the Squamish Nation, the library, our staff, Vancouver Coastal Health, Under One Roof, RCMP, although your logo didn't make it on the screen, as well as members of the neighborhood, and I do believe that clients of Under One Roof are also part of this committee, and they have created a working document to focus on some priorities, and so this is a great, that's my editorial, but in my opinion, new initiative of community agencies, neighborhood, and the District of Squamish coming together with everyone to work on a community outreach approach to solving problems and providing public safety for everybody in our communities. So what are our next steps? We'll continue to action and implement the action plans. Certainly, the resource recommendations will be incorporated into our longer-term human resources strategy. Strategic plans are really important and will be prioritized for completion and update, and then incorporated into our five-year financial planning for council and the community to understand the impact of Public Safety Services going forward. Appendage to this report are two case studies, or sorry, business cases for further detail on what has been provided or proposed in our five-year financial plan. RCMP is a shift, originally, it asked, the budget proposal asked for one regular member. The staff, in working through the Public Safety Services Review and looking more strategically at how to support and leverage the police member resources and high-value police work, RCMP have come forward with a proposal for the watch clerks, which would be that combined administrative guard capability to support the police members, and then Squamish Fire Rescue for one firefighter. Bylaw and animal control, we are proposing to operationalize the two community patrol officers and fund them ongoing. More detail on that, on those positions can be addressed next week when we present the visitor and management and camping management plan. So those are the service level changes, and it's important to note in the RCMP attachment, it indicates the full cost of the watch clerks, but the financial plan proposal is for a partial year, and so the amount proposed didn't change just the actual position. And because everybody loves puppies, this is our staff sergeant Gareth Bradley with Cedar, and we do have dog handling at our RCMP detachment, but I thought it would be a fun picture to finish with. So I am here to take any questions, as are all the leads of our Public Safety Services areas, thank you.
Thank you, Ms Glenday. Council, councillor Anderson, councillor French.
Ms Glenday, we are given an overview of staff resources under bylaw services. Page 25 outlines a table of the breakdown of the categories of staff, a staff complement under there, but a topic that is not touched on in the report, and my question is, is this a topic deserving consideration, and that is, with respect to bylaw services, staff turnover? Is this a topic that needs our attention? Is it being given attention? Does it affect human resource and budget planning?
That is an excellent question, and it absolutely deserves attention and always does. Currently, so what is shown on page 25 is that there is a supervisor and a number of staff. The supervisor left the district a number of months ago, and we have since posted for a bylaw manager position, and in terms of staff turnover in any department, but especially with bylaw, it has been a challenge, and I can assure you that leadership and human resources have been working diligently on ways to retain staff and attract staff to the district, although it's not specifically called out in this report, it is definitely top of mind.
Thank you. Chair, I have another question on another topic. On page 29 is an overview of our Public Safety Group's emergency support services, that is, it's under the emergency management heading. Now, we have, or the district has, a service agreement with Squamish Search and Rescue, but we do not have a service agreement, which is, as is indicated here, with Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue, so the RMSR, the Marine Search and Rescue. My question here is, given the growth of recreational boating, and clearly we have about 1,000 boat owners here, but not only that, a growth in the use of various types of marine vessels in Northern House Sound, and clearly, this is, we can only expect further, is there a need for a services agreement? Are we coming to a point where this may be advantageous with a service agreement with Marine Search and Rescue?
That's an excellent question for consideration, and certainly, staff will take that back and think about it. I don't know if Ms Latimer has anything to add other than definitely worth considering for staff to take away.
Sliderman, if you're online, go ahead.
Through the chair, yeah, no, it's definitely something for consideration, and we have a very good relationship with Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue, and we'll continue those discussions with them about what's the appropriate model moving forward.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, one more question for now, for me, Chair, and this concerns a couple of references in the report to our community amenity contribution policy. On page 35, it's a general comment applying to all of the four divisions of Public Safety that we're addressing, I'll quote, "It is assumed that a community amenity contribution type structure could be implemented with the developer for public safety resources as projects are given approval to proceed." Elsewhere in the report, on page 45 of the report, specifically with respect to fire rescue recommendations, it states as a recommendation, "Explore the, excuse me, explore opportunity to solicit community amenity contributions from developers to support investment in additional apparatus as required." My question, Ms Glenday, is these, are we addressing this, or will be, will we be addressing this in future community amenity contribution policy reviews? So far, we've only highlighted affordable housing and childcare. Could this be another topic that could be addressed in an upcoming community amenity contribution policy review?
Thank you, through the Chair. In short, yes, it, as part of the recommendation of this report, it's something that has happened in previous communities, is that with more density, you know, a fire apparatus, like a ladder truck as an example, or so, could be considered as an amenity contribution, but that is ultimately up to council and would be discussed as part of community amenity policy if it was a priority.
Thank you. I have councillor French, followed by councillor Petengill, and Mayor Elliott.
Thanks, Chair. The personnel changes and movement at Squamish Fire Rescue is of great interest to me, and I think I heard a semi- quasi-personnel announcement in the presentation, I'm wondering if we could hear more about the new second deputy fire chief that's been hired.
Mayor Elliott, I would prefer if Chief Stoner would like to introduce our new deputy chief, I don't know if our new deputy chief's on the line, but he can certainly tell us about him.
Go ahead, Chief Stoner.
Yeah, thank you, through the Chair. No, our new deputy fire chief is meeting with North Vancouver, and we're sort of discussing Wildland Response, which is a great place. His name is Chuck Sean Swordfitter, and he actually started his career with Squamish Fire out of high school, he worked through our paid-on-call ranks here, and then went to Kitimat for a number, for a number of years, and now is back home, and he has quite a bit of family in the community, and so was thrilled to be here, so we are also thrilled to have him here.
Thank you. I know of his family and his history with Squamish, it's very exciting. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Petengill, Mayor Elliott, and councillor Herford.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just a smaller question first, on page 38, it lists the various risks that Squamish faces, and it says an interface fire is a low risk, but my understanding is that's quite a high risk and it's driving some budget asks and our wildfire DPA and so on, so I'm just wondering if someone can comment, is that a typo in the risks, or? So I'm just wondering if someone can comment, is that a typo in the risks, or?
Through the chair. I know that this was taken out of our community risk assessment report from 2015, so it's six years dated. So my understanding would likely that would change, but perhaps Ms. Latimer has more to say on that.
Go ahead, Ms. Latimer.
Through the chair, I may be able to field this one, as Megan works right next door to me, if that's appropriate. Yeah, so it is, as stated, it is out of an older hazard risk assessment. I believe we also had pandemic rated relatively low, so things do change over time. I think perhaps is, we do have a plan to update our hazard risk analysis, and there is a budget requesting for this year's hazard risk analysis currently below line, I believe.
Okay, thank you. So my other question is, and Ms. Glenday, I appreciate the background on how this master plan or review has evolved. I guess I'm sort of wondering, Bill, given that, when we sort of look at the bigger picture, like including equity and some of the other challenges that are driving what's going on right now, and how to interpret the recommendations in the meantime. And to get a bit more concrete with that, we've had a lot of discussions, whether it's the short-term rentals or the planning changes in terms of low-carbon incentive programs, the waste reduction, tourist management, where we seem to really say, we're going to focus on education, there's going to be a lot of education. And so I'm sort of wondering why, you know, this projects, you know, based on some normative scaling, we need to increase this many bylaw officers, but, you know, why or when do we look at doing something different? And maybe we need to hire educators, for lack of a better term, as opposed to bylaw officers? Like, are there different ways we should be doing some of these things? And then likewise, with some of the policing, it was mentioned, there's a lot of mental health and increasing our mental health challenges. So should we be funding some social workers instead? And where do we start to think about doing things differently as opposed to just scaling with population?
Through the chair. I'll answer the first question about bylaw, and, you know, bringing in the community patrol officers was actually one element around focusing on the education versus the enforcement. Now granted, they can, they can still write tickets, but the idea was around customer service and providing succession planning when it's difficult to hire the fully qualified bylaw officers. I, you know, I will take that away and think about it with our staff. I'm not saying no. The first thing that comes to my head is that, at some point, sometimes we do have to enforce. And so to have a staff member that isn't able to, we don't currently have the capacity to enjoy both in terms of resourcing. That said, going forward, is there a different model for bylaw that's, you know, even further on the education and customer service side of things? Yes, and we will keep our eyes open to that. Similarly, with policing around as things shift. And, you know, the RCMP ultimately brings forward their strategic plan for council. You know, this report does talk about leveraging partnerships with VCH around that mental health. So the short answer to your question is, is yes. And as we look forward, are there different ways to do things? Certainly, and we will continue to look at that.
So thank you. I appreciate that. And I guess my thought was that the master plan was supposed to sort of dig into this, and this is why or where or when we could shift versus not shift, and just sort of understanding that. And it seems that because we've gone through review, we haven't completed that piece. So when do we think we would do that sort of master plan?
Thank you, through the chair. I can't answer that exactly when. Completing this report, buttoning it up, looking at the action plans, integrating future strategies, as we move forward now, the decision needs to be, do we need a fulsome master plan? Like, how, what does that look like? How do, how do I lead the general managers and work with the RCMP to incorporate that? Is it a master plan, or are there different mechanisms to bring in those lenses? When it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion, when it comes to climate change, as an example, those lenses are across our entire organization. I knew this question was coming, because when I was going to say, this doesn't fit the bill for a master plan, it's a review, the question would be, okay, so when's the master plan coming? That will be my next piece of work in terms of, what do we need to meet councils and the community's objective around public safety services? Is it a master plan, or is there a different way to get the same work done?
So, and I appreciate that, and I guess, I guess I am sort of left wondering, though, is this just a sort of population-based increase with the normative factor? And so, like, have we had a chance to really think about, are we doing things the most effective way possible? Or I guess I'm trying to understand that, that gap between the master plan and a review, for lack of better terms, but I guess, maybe I'm not understanding, but it feels a little bit like we are just sort of, the recommendations are largely to continue according to population growth, as opposed to sort of really understanding, how do we need to more broadly adjust things? Or where's there opportunities?
Through the chair, the first step will be, as we are updating the multi-year plans for each of the departments. So rather than move into another public safety master plan piece of work, RCMP Fire are bringing forward their five-year multi, or multi-year plans. We're working with bylaw and animal control and emergency management on their strategies as well. And at that point, that's where we will start to incorporate those things. So as I mentioned, this review is a snapshot in time. It provides a very limited model for staffing resources and what it looks like based on population and some subjective factor. Moving forward, we know that the context has completely changed and appreciate that. So to answer your question, that work will be incorporated into the strategic plans. And if we still do not meet our outcomes of doing things differently, then maybe at that point, we go back and do we do another master plan incorporating all four?
Mayor Elliott, Counsel Herford, and then I'll put myself on the list.
Thank you, Chair. So one of the things that was pointed out at the beginning of your presentation, Ms. Glenday, was the flaw in terms of reference didn't include community consultation. But now we've got a whole list of strategic plans, and are those mandated to have that element of community consultation?
Through the chair, that's a great point. And as far as the fire and the RCMP plans go, I would say no. So that is definitely a gap in our public safety planning that we need to address going forward. The roundtables that staff have been working on is certainly a first step in engaging aspects of our community, but community-wide, that's a gap right now.
I think that public perception of the services we're providing and what's working and what's not is actually really important to our decision-making. So just want to make sure we figure out a way to correct that flaw as we go forward. The other thing, when I look at the general public safety recommendations that are in this report, the one thing that's not reflected there, but that gets mentioned in each section, whether it was bylaw, police, fire, was communication and radio communication. And I don't know whether I should be nervous about it or not, because the report says, well, they can sort of communicate, but it's not ideal, and these guys have multiple channels, but these ones don't. By the end of the report, I think I determined, in a really big emergency, there's some sort of provincial communications line. But I couldn't understand why the report points out all of these communications challenges and then makes no recommendation at the end. And I wonder if someone could speak to that.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question, and the report is light on recommendations. In terms of radios, it looks like Gareth is going to answer that. But before Gareth, Staff Sergeant Bradley steps up, IT is aware of our radio systems and infrastructure, so it's not that we're completely ignoring it, but point made, and we will incorporate.
Go ahead, Ms. Arthurs, and then Staff Sergeant Bradley.
Thank you, Chair. And we do have one radio frequency, for lack of a better term, I'm not sure what the technical term is, that is available and that we haven't activated. And it's sort of sitting in our back pocket right now, and it is available, and we can start using it.
Thank you. Staff Sergeant Bradley, go ahead. You can take the mask off to speak, if you wish.
There. Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, just through the chair. Mayor, to answer your question, we've addressed the radio concerns. RCMP have a combined events channel, where I've signed up our fire services bylaws, our emergent BC ambulance, to have access to that. So we have a combined events channel, so we can all switch to and then speak to our partners when we're on a massive scene. Bylaw is working on some radio updates currently. I'm working with them to help them kind of get the equipment up to date, and they'll be along there shortly, hopefully next year, of some radios that are compatible and get the channel on their service as well. So, but there are some partnerships that we're working with with them, as I'm currently overseeing them. So, but to answer your radio question, we do have a combined events channel that we can all speak to.
Thank you. I'll sleep better at night now. My last, I'll just, a quick comment is that now that everyone's doing their own strategic plan, I suppose what I'm wondering is, will each of those strategic plans have a section where they speak to the overlap with the other agencies? So how does council maintain the big picture about where there's, there's need for collaboration and joint response and, and planning? And now we're going to get all these separate reports? And so how do you intend to sort of maintain that continuity and big picture through that process?
Through the chair. In terms of continuing to foster the interoperability and the cross-functionality of our Public Safety Services departments, that really will come through, through leadership. I think that the strategic plans ultimately should have sections where they overlap. And in terms of next steps, to be perfectly honest, so we have these separate strategic plans, we have our five-year financial plan, and then this one snapshot sort of services review. So next step, do we need, looking at how we keep that holistic lens of our Public Safety Services is important to us, and I know important to council, and how we continue to do it forms part of our next steps, but I haven't got a concrete answer for you. So I don't know if it will be another master plan, or how through leadership we make sure that happens, but please stay tuned. That is one of our objectives.
Counsel Herford, and then myself.
Thank you. My line of questioning was around those strategic plans versus master plans. I think that's been captured, so I'll pass it now. Thank you.
My question was with respect to the letter that was attached later to our agenda fire underwriters survey, and on, there's one of the charts that's called Fire Department Grading Items. It's about the fourth page, it looks like. And, and it's sort of the blue part is what we've accomplished, and the orange part is what is available for improvement. And the one with the largest orange component is total fire force available. And you did mention the deputy chief's hiring, but is there more to it than that? Are you able to elaborate on that?
Thank you, through the chair. What I understand from the underwriters' report is that the gaps that are demonstrated are ultimately, if you want a better ranking than what you have. So we've gone from a five to a four, which is really quite excellent. And in speaking to Chief Stoner, Squamish is not a community where we would want to achieve necessarily a two, or a one, or even a three, because the resources required versus benefit is so extreme and not necessarily required. So that gap is not what we need to fill, that entire orange bar. However, it does indicate that out of all of our fire resources, personnel is the one that's lagging. And we have a plan in our five-year financial plan to continue to grow the personnel to meet the requirements. So there's one this year and in subsequent years. I think in an ideal world, adding a whole new shift for personnel would be, from a scheduling point of view, most ideal, but we also recognize the balancing of tax pressures and other priorities in the district that we're looking at it on a longer-term basis.
Thank you. And right now, of course, we're going through budget discussions on a variety of, well, the whole district operations, and staff have, and it's really helpful for me, very often with these line items shown how much it costs per household for an average residential household in Squamish for this particular addition to the budget or not. And it struck me when I was reading that report, the same fire writers, fire underwriters' survey, that I know that those surveys are used to set insurance premiums in the district. And so I was wondering, you know, if we start talking about, if we increase by one or two or three people in the fire department, which could be a significant cost, but if we compare that on a per-household cost to insurance premiums that might be lowered, if we could ever do that kind of an analysis when we're bringing forward thoughts for additional members, it might be helpful to the community to, to see that, yes, you're paying more taxes over here, but you're saving more money over there, and just compare that analysis. And I can appreciate the chief's position that, at some point, you're trying to get to infinity, and just the cost just is not there, doesn't make sense. But, but sort of in that middle stage where we seem to be right now, there may be moves that we could make that may be justified in other cost savings for the taxpayer. So I'll just leave that comment out there. Counsel, any further questions? Then I would like, the motion on the floor, the staff recommendation, is that we receive this review for information, and I'm suggesting the motion be put on the floor, and if there are any comments, we speak to the motion and put your comments in there. Is there somebody who's prepared to move that motion? Mayor Elliott, seconded Counsel Anderson, comments. Mayor Elliott, go to your first. No? Counsel Anderson?
Thank you. I wanted to draw attention as a comment to a section of the report under, it's key challenges, mainly referring to policing. About 10, 12 years ago, there was the Plaquess Report, it's probably at least 10, 12 years ago, that was a summary of observations of trends in policing standards leaving, leading to higher costs for the taxpayer. Recently, this has been a topic for this council. We've discussed body worn cameras, for example, and what they may entail with respect to costs and administrative costs. On this page, it's page 17, under key challenges, there's reference to increased complexity of response for policing, the proliferate- of response for policing, the proliferation of digital information and investigative procedural administrative demands. And then there's also under evolving policing standards changing to, changes to policing standards coming from court decisions and legislation. What I'd like to highlight here is that council each year plans and prioritizes political advocacy initiatives, mostly at the UBCM forum, but not only that one. Ministers' meetings and opportunities for liaison with other local governments. And what I'd like to suggest or highlight is that this is very important information for council, the these key challenges and the administrative burdens. It is good ongoing that we get a clear picture from our agencies, from staff, so that we can take this in at our level, at our platform, in terms of political advocacy. After all, these are major budget impacts involved here, as has been discussed in various instances previously, for our taxpayers. So I just wanted to highlight, this is very important information, and the clearer the better as regards demands being placed that coming from policy change, court decisions, and legislation change. Other than that, I just wish to support the recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Patengill.
Yes, thank you. And again, I really appreciate the clarification at the start about the distinction between review and master plan and so on. I guess for me, I am still somewhat eager to to see something more along the lines of a master plan. We've sort of highlighted the equitable and culturally aware piece. And and I'll just sort of comment too that I do see in the various discussions that we have and the actions that people plan that I know people are thinking about these things. I guess I also though see value in very explicitly stating these as sort of an overarching framework for a plan and then understanding all our plans sort of in that context. For me, it's really helpful making budget decisions and other policy decisions. The other piece that was missing for me in this at this point is just an explicit statement of some of the, I think particularly relevant contexts. So global pandemic, climate crisis, ecological collapse, an opiate crisis, growing inequity, massive accelerating technological change, systemic racism reconciliation, a housing crisis. I think, you know, people, we're all facing a whole lot, and it's really driving, I think, a lot of our behavior and probably needs to shape how we are responding in different ways. And and so for me, I guess I am hopeful we can sooner rather than later get to work on something that really articulates that explicitly and ties all these pieces together. At the very least, I would like to see some explicit consideration of these in strategic plans and so on that are coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, staff, for bringing this forward. I know this is a lot of work. It's got many challenges to it. It's obviously not finished yet. It's sort of an ongoing discussion. But some of the challenges that strike me, and and one of them is inter-jurisdictional responsibility. And the one that pops out is the RCMP and whether or not resources we better put to deal with mental health issues into somebody who's mental health trained. And the difficulty with that for a local government is that that's not our responsibility. It's Vancouver Coastal Health, and how do we deal with that? And do we have the resources to go into healthcare and fund it that way? And so these things are not easy to resolve. I do agree with the the service agreements with with search and rescue and with the addition, Counselor Anderson thought to add, Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue. As a voter, I see the need for it and the growing need year over year in the northern part of the Sound with a whole variety of different watercraft that are out there. Some of them are less seaworthy than others. So I think that is something as we go forward, notwithstanding that those organizations are largely peopled by volunteers. Still, it is something that I think the district is going to have to consider as part of their overall public safety plan and planning going forward. But thank you very much. And seeing nothing else, I will call a question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So counsel, we will stand adjourned. We're only a little bit, no, we're 15 minutes late. We will stand adjourned until 1:45. Oh, okay. We have a delegation at 1:30. I'll see you at 1:30. We'll stand adjourned until 1:30. Welcome back. We're back to the committee of the whole meeting, and we are at item four, sub one, a delegation from Squamish Helping Hands Society. Ms. McCall, floor is yours.
I have to touch this button. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for having us here today. We're here to give you an update on what's been happening since the beginning of Under One Roof about a year ago. As you know, Under One Roof represents an amazing collaboration of entities, agencies, people, great minds, incredible vision from community, from everywhere. So BC Housing, obviously yourselves, the Squamish Food Bank, ourselves, to name just a few. The update is it was a really, really hard year. We went from 15 beds on the ground, on the mats on the floor program in our firehouse shelter, to 48 units of sleeping ability to accommodate 48 people at the bridge on the blind, on the Mamquan Blind Channel, which was our temporary COVID, get it together, again, in an amazing collaboration of forces and people and entities and agencies. To finally, by October of 2020, we were at, we were in Under One Roof. Everybody in their beds tucked in by the end of October. So we're really almost exactly one year in the beginning. Been a difficult year for sure. We pivoted, as everybody did, and made things happen. And we're amazed to finally be able to change the language from sheltering people to housing folks. And from those meager beginnings, I guess, in that building of a vision, we arrived at Under One Roof where we were able to provide and deliver a host of services that we couldn't deliver in our old iteration at the firehouse. So starting with supportive housing and shelter, food programs, an amazing community food hub, a drop-in center, and expanded and deepened outreach program, which basically is the sort of force behind our programs for independence. Then we started to be able to have onsite clinicians. We're looking ahead, this got on this, on this slide because I'm so excited about it. We're looking ahead to primary care onsite. We already have clinicians onsite through our Squamish Can Project. We're also looking forward to building on what we've already started, but more so in the future, supported employment, enterprise, volunteering, volunteer program. And the things, you know, we expected a lot of things as we were moving into Under One Roof, but there was a lot of things that we didn't expect. And one of them was to become the harm reduction core for Squamish or Sea to Sky. So the programs that we've been delivering in harm, in the harm reduction were were really new to us and changed how how things came about. We also were able to provide some community initiatives or and are working on different community initiatives, including, and today we're going to talk a little bit about the downtown Squamish Initiative, the Safer Communities Grant from UBCM. Good news is the community food hub, it has gone from a, an old version of what antiquated, and what's how to say the word, old version of what a food bank is to a community food hub, a market. Instead of, instead of saying Squamish Food Bank, we say the Squamish Market. We've gone from a charity place to a food justice way of thinking. And it's just, it's gone, it's going great guns with an incredible amount of food programs, including just starting up our Meals on Wheels program. But our school lunches continue. We also took on the breakfast program. And it just has become a place where people can access healthy nutritious food without the stigma around that used to be, that you used to feel in a Squamish, in a food bank type of service. I poke my head in often, and I look in and I I just see a grocery store. So I hope you all, and this PDF you can have so you can sort of, you know, I'm not going to read or go through everything on it. But you know, this was, as I said, the harm reduction stuff was unanticipated. This was anticipated, and it's pretty fun to see your vision come true. So we are working from this vision and from this mission. And it is, it is, it's showing us that we can change the way we think around food. It's about, people can shop because they need food. They can shop because they want to support a cause. They can shop because they really believe in a no-waste food environment. So sorry that these slides are not showing up quite the way they should be. But harm reduction, so as I said, it was not the anticipated thing, but it's become a deep core of what we do. Harm reduction is all about making sure that we minimize harm to health and an attempt to prevent death, drug-related death. And you know, what we've seen over this past year has been incredible. We are happy to accommodate the Squamish Community Action Team. So through Helping Hands, we, we, we have a Squamish Community Action Team. And that was the beginning of the harm reduction movement. Through there, we, we developed a peer witness program, which really got going at the bridge. And as you know, we opened the overdose, the Squamish overdose prevention site, all of which are ensuring that people are safer, getting safe supplies. Our staff have become, you know, trained in advanced overdose prevention training. And it's been amazing and a real learning for all of us. Through this learning, through us seeing that the need was so great, we realized that we needed to look at ways to keep community safe because it is showing up in clearly in ways that we never anticipated. As a small community, we, we didn't, probably didn't see this coming. And so one of the things we got going was a community resilience committee. As, as you may know, Dan Pageley sits on that committee, and it's an inter-agency committee. And and what we're trying to do with that is to look at the issues of homelessness, but also drug-related issues, substance use, and mental health issues from a community perspective. It's not just Under One Roof. It's not just Squamish Helping Hands, but it's a community issue that we're going to work together to help mitigate. I don't know if we're going to solve it. But so these are some of the ways in which our tenants, so shared community stewardship, citizenship, relationship are the sort of key underpinning ideas. Top priorities we've discovered are safety, looking at service gaps, looking at the challenges that we face as a community and innovative ways to to approach them. We're looking at compassion fatigue, not only for frontline workers, but definitely for frontline workers throughout the community in all areas, but also for people, our residents, our neighborhoods, who are looking at, you know, seeing dirty needles or seeing people fighting in the street, all the kinds of behaviors that come with this, this kind of problem. We're looking at best practice in terms of RCMP and bylaw and ways that we can all interface in this in a, in a nonjudgmental, nonpunitive way. So the priority zone obviously is main and third. And some of the things we're looking at are looking for security support at Under One Roof, fireside living room chats. And then, and then as one of the strategies for this community resilience is the downtown neighborhood initiative through the UBCM grant. This is a strengthening communities grant that we did, as you know, together with you. It's a very large, big program, the grants worth about $425,000. And the idea is, and we're, we're in the process now, to find a way, different, coming at it from different angles, find a way for us to have everybody included in community, everybody feel safe, everybody be able to move through community, each in their own way, without harming each other. As mentioned, it's a big project. I'm, I'm going to leave you to read that at some later time. But these are some of the things that we're looking to, looking to accomplish. Some of the activities will, will be a multiple community care team, small group neighborhood participation activities, being able to train community members in areas that, you know, seem, you know, far off and uncomfortable for them, facilitated dialogues and workshops and so on. And that's, we've just hired, we're just about to hire our project manager. And we'll also then be getting a project coordinator for the volunteer aspect for the mobile team. So this is underway. The timeline is, we just found out a couple of months ago. We're just getting our, our feet under us in terms of the hiring process. So we hope to be able to extend it through next summer. As we look ahead, as an organization, we're looking at, you know, building capacity. We, we need to build capacity, and we've been doing that throughout this year. There's nothing like a pandemic to come along to make sure you know what you don't know, make sure you learn what you need to learn and become experts in the field that you're in. And I feel like that's what Helping Hands has done this year. We want to make sure that we nurture our relationship with the Squamish Food Bank toward amalgamation. That's underway. And and that, that collaboration is working beautifully and really proud to see how that vision, which started a long time ago on the, on the back of an Hupkin, has come to fruition. The other thing we're looking at is more housing. We want to engage BC Housing and yourselves to create more housing, different types of housing, next step housing. And and the other, then, you know, we need to look at the thing that we've all been talking about as we, as we move through this, this year, and what we're discovering through community resilience and through the, the UBCM grant discussions, is that there's a, a small number of people that are falling through the cracks, cracks that need complex care and a different kind of housing. And one of the things we have decided is we're going to really look at that and take that on and see. So we've been looking at what we call unbreakable housing or indestructible housing. That's sort of an exciting kind of off-tilter future for us. But we need to find a way to house people who are not met, whose needs are not met through the regular supportive housing model. Again, I'll leave this to you to read, but it is basically from a, a article on the, the fact that people are being, are falling through the cracks. And what we're finding out is that every community and every city, which we're all experiencing the same thing, and it is, it was unexpected. And I think it comes from that push between the overdose crisis and our, and COVID, and that push, push, push. And it has really revealed an incredible challenge for us to to be facing. As we move on, we hope to move back into the part of the dream that was really so positive and still is, is the, the enterprise part of what we do and making sure that people have food, shelter, and all the things, community, all the things, but also a sense of purpose. Because it, you know, it has always felt to me that if we don't include the sense of purpose, then, then we're really falling short. So much energy has gone toward the overdose crisis and the small minority of folks that, that take up that space that we haven't been able to get to the enterprise part of what we do. But that is definitely in our, in our sights, especially as we move out of COVID and can expand. Some stats for you, some big stats, 325% increase in emergency shelter stays. The, the stats for food is fantastic. 300, this is an average month, 307 volunteer hours, 86 hampers, 200 people fed through hampers, 841 participant visits. The overdose prevention site, 2,039 overdose prevention site visits, only three overdoses. And yeah, and so on. You can definitely look at that. And I just sort of leave you with this because the one thing that sort of keeps us going is knowing that for the other group of folks who we are housing successfully, there's a, you know, a very positive feedback that we're getting and it makes our work definitely worth doing. And, and gives us a little warm and fuzzy feeling when we're, you know, trying to grapple with the, the pieces of the puzzle that are not yet figured out. So thank you very much. If there are any questions, please feel free.
Thank you very much, Council. Council Anderson.
Ms. McKell, in the presentation you used an acronym and I would just wonder whether you may be able to help you with it. And that was SFBS. And you were looking towards, or there's a concept of, of looking towards future amalgamation. I wonder if you could elaborate on this, please?
Yeah, that's our, that's the, the collaboration we have between the Squamish Community, Squamish Food Bank Society. So that's the acronym, sorry about that. And yes, we're, we're working together to amalgamate because it makes more sense and we just feel like it's, it's, it's a natural progression that we've been, we've been engaged in.
Thank you. And you have to turn your mic off when you're not speaking, Maureen. Thank you. Counsel French.
Thank you. Just following up Counselor Anderson's question, just to be clear, is the Squamish Food Bank Society going to dissolve as a result of amalgamation? Will, will we ultimately see that society disappear because of this new situation?
That's a complicated question, even though it doesn't seem like it. We will not see Squamish Food Bank disappear. It will just be part of our umbrella, I guess, is if you look at it as an umbrella. And that we won't, we won't try to hold two societies, but, but the idea of a, a food bank or that will remain within our organization.
Go ahead, Counsel French, then Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. And just one more follow-up unrelated, the backyard project sounds exciting, although my question is not about that. The 325% increase in shelter stays, that's dramatic. And am, am I correct in saying that even with that 325% increase in shelter stays, we're still not meeting the demand? There, there are still folks out there who are not being sheltered. Is, is that an accurate assessment?
Yes, that's accurate. We, we are at full capacity. We've increased our shelter beds. We have winter beds, you know, extreme weather beds. And we have our housing as well. And we are at full capacity. And there are people who are still not served for a variety of reasons.
Mayor Elliott, excuse me, Mayor Elliott, followed by Counsel Pen Gil.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation and that slide is so impactful to go from 15 mats on the floor to 48 units in an ATCO trailer to 70 people housed. And that all happened in a year, in a pandemic. And so huge pat on the back to you and your team for sure. And I know there was a lot of collaboration that went into that, but still, I think because you hold the vision and hold people's feet to the fire about the importance of housing first, I think that's how that kind of progress happens. And I know it caught the attention of the province, so well done. I guess my question, I've got a couple of questions. So we know the province is working on a complex care model. And I'm wondering if they have reached out to service providers yet for feedback, as they said they were anticipating progress by this fall. And of course, we're, we're well into the fall. So I wondered if you have heard anything or have been consulted in the development of that?
We haven't been consulted and that's a bit disappointing in the sense that it is definitely an issue that we're seeing, but this is a big idea. And I think it's province-wide and I believe they're hoping to pilot it out in five different communities. I don't know where they are. I haven't seen. I, I suspect they're behind. And, and I also, if I may, the approach sounds like something similar to supportive congregate housing. So I'm not sure how there's, so that's where I'd like to be consulted because I'm not sure how that's going to work. I don't, I don't think that we can go to, to congregate housing for these folks. And that's why we're looking at indestructible housing, some kind of, some other solution that is outside the box, so to say, so to speak. So yeah.
And how, how would you define complex care? And so when you speak about your sort of initiative to look at indestructible housing, who is that for?
There's a group of people who are, who experience intense substance use and mental health challenges that they cannot easily be managed in a congregate setting. In fact, they can't be. We built a building that costs approximately $12 million. And within the first few, you know, first few months of also trying to house those folks, we realized that it, it is way more complicated and way more difficult than you can imagine. So it's folks who can't manage, who are, have great difficulty managing in the setting, in that setting. So there was a lot, there was destruction, you know, you know, a lot of work on our part to keep the building in good condition. Those folks are out in community generally. And on, I think the idea between, by, in terms of complex care is we have to really take each individual and figure out a solution or I guess a solution that meets their needs versus it meeting our need to build a congregate supportive housing. So yeah, does that answer your question? Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Counsel Pen Gil.
Yes, thank you. And it's just an incredible amount of awesome work that's being done by Helping Hands right now. So thank you. My question is with the federal programs around COVID ending or having ended, are you hearing or seeing a, a change coming or a significant change in, in need or demand? Or is it, things are pretty constant?
I'm not sure what you mean by federal, say it again.
My understanding is that a lot of the federal supports around COVID are, are ending or have ended recently. So I'm just wondering if, if we're seeing a change in, in demand for your services, a sudden sort of bump?
I haven't yet. We haven't yet seen a sudden bump because it's been non-stop since COVID hit. We, we haven't stopped. People haven't stopped coming through. I assume that this next wave will likely be folks that perhaps were working and are slowly getting back into the workforce. And I would imagine where we really see it initially, we might see it in the food hub. And, and we're happy to, to be there for that.
Counsel Herbert.
Thank you. And that leads nicely to my, my question. I was curious about sort of the order of, of operations. Like as you see, maybe like a wave of demand, like Counsel Pen Gil was asking about. Yeah, that's where we first see it is in the, the food hub is the first affected. But then is there a correlation to a spike there to, that there's going to be demand at sort of that, that higher level of needing, needing shelters potentially shortly after? Or, or are these sort of a little less relatable that way?
They're totally relatable, but even without any wave or, we're so underhoused in our community that we, we need to be exploring next projects. We definitely need that. Yeah, we could see, we could see a wave or a spike, but I, I don't, I can't answer that question, but you know, 100% for sure. But yeah, it's been, it's been such a non-stop pull that we wouldn't be surprised, you know, we'll just keep going.
And sorry, one more. I'm curious this indestructible housing, I like the, the, yeah, I, I kind of think I understand where that's going, but that is, that's something where it's quite specific per, per person, depending on their, on their challenges, what you're, is what you're telling us, rather than something that we can sort of, these are the folks that we haven't successfully been able to sort of plug into an existing system. So it needs to be something that's quite specific per the, the resident. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it has to be quite specific per person, but you know, there's a group of people that are, would respond, I think, to this type of housing. And I don't know exactly what it looks like yet, but it would be, you know, somewhere where someone is warm, sheltered in a, in a unit that is somewhat indestructible. So we just want to make sure that they don't have to be in the elements, that there's a place where they can lay down and be safe. And then we would reach out, of course, through outreach to, to make sure that their needs are, their other needs are being addressed. Needs for treatment, needs for connection, needs for food, all of those things. But you know, allowing them a space that isn't by, by their behavior excluding them. So you know, it, it sounds crazy, but there are behaviors that, that supportive housing is, you know, excludes them because they're trying, we're trying to look at everybody's safety. So it is, yeah, it's tricky.
Thank you. And this, from your description, it sounds like this is a developing area. Is that correct? Or are there other, are there examples of, of this being implemented in, in other places? Because I know we, we can't be the only place experiencing these challenges with these folks.
That's a good question. I, I don't know that anybody's quite looking at it the way I am or we are, but I hope that it's, it's out there or people are looking at it. I was disappointed when I read the article about complex care housing, that it didn't talk about that. I think, I think we're going to get to that. I think we have to, people have to move along that continuum and realize we can't keep doing the same thing and, and expecting a different result. So I'd say, I'd say this is pretty leading edge and, and we as a community could probably do that too.
Thank you. Just two questions. One is that the 325% increase in shelter, is that more people or is that because you have more beds available or is it a combination of both?
It's probably a combination of, of more beds, more people and actual events, sleeping events. So being full, right? So it's a, it's hard to actually unpack that because we do have more beds. We do have more people and in, and with those two, we are sleeping more people more nights.
And the second question was-
Sorry, it's a five-year, five-year increase. So over five years, not three.
And the second question was with respect to the backyard project. And I was just wondering, have you identified a price for that? Have you got people prepared to provide funding or institutions or governments? And do you have a timeline for that?
I know Carol could answer this better than I could, but we are working with Rotary on this project. And I don't have an idea at this time around the, the cost. We haven't got that far.
Counsel. So Counsel, I'm just looking for a motion to receive. But it's put on the floor, then we can have comments if you wish. It's moved by Counsel French, second by Counsel Herbert. Counsel, any comments? Well, I'll make a comment. Thank you very much for coming. And thank you, to put it simply, thank you very much for the work you do. So Counsel, we will move on. Next item is item five under staff reports, five sub one, 55 plus recreation and culture programming recommendations.
Counsel Reese. I don't believe we voted on that last motion.
Small detail. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel French.
Thank you, Chair. We need two minutes to get our next presenter set up.
We will declare a two-minute recess. Welcome back. We are now on item five sub one, 55 plus recreation and culture programming recommendations. Ms. Basago, flourish yours.
Thank you very much, Baron Counsel. I will just do a brief introduction and then hand it, hand it over to Ms. Basago. My name is Devon Guest and I'm the Acting Director of Recreation Services here at the District of Squamish. And I'm with community planner Sandra Basago. And together with a large amount of people, we embarked on the 55 plus recreation and cultural programming report. I wanted to read an excerpt from an email from one of the steering group members who couldn't be with us today. His name is Mr. Dixon. And as a steering group member, provided some very good context to staff as we embarked on this process. I appreciate your inclusion, your inclusionary style and clarity and which will be very helpful in the process to get some consensus from a diverse group. I say that positively because seniors are not a genre or a discreet social group. And any direction coming from a group formed to represent such a group will naturally reflect the differences in diversity. And that was, and that was our starting point. I will now pass the report and information over to Ms. Basago to take counsel through it. Thank you. Great, thank you. Just go to the next slide here. Just an outline of what I'll present, a little bit of brief background on the project and then jump right into the engagement process, what we did with the steering group and with the public survey process. And then I'll outline of summary of the survey outcomes and finish off with the steering group recommendations. I'll just plant a seed here for everyone that we are seeking counsel endorsement on the engagement summary report on which this presentation is based. And also the steering group recommendations for delivering recreation and culture programming across three district venues, Brennan Park Recreation Center, the 55 Activity Center and West Winds Facilities. So just in terms of background, the, the item that spurred all of this was the development of a new seniors residential building at the West Winds Building at 38275 Third Avenue. It's going to be opening in 2022. And this presented an opportunity to take a step back and say, well, not only what kind of programming can happen at the West Winds, but what can happen and what can continue happening at the 55 and Brennan Park. The West Winds, as many of you know, has a recreation programming from nine to 2:00 PM. And what we did, so Counsel, earlier this spring endorsed an engagement plan to broadly engage with the community about programming across the three facilities. And the scope was to, in terms of the engagement, was to work with a steering group on one hand and then survey and do some broad outreach to the community. And we kept them very busy with an, the approach that we took was serving and in-person serving with people, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But the programming scope was to make sure that whatever program is, I guess, I guess, program activated is going to reflect the needs and interests of the community, but also that it can be delivered within the finance, financial constraints of the municipality. So the steering group was called upon in April and May in the spring to form together. There was a call put out and all that applied were accepted. The mandate of the group is to and was to examine the current recreation programming and develop recommendations that are going to be, you're going to be hearing about today. The scope also included an additional byproduct, which was to think about future aspirations for programming. The workshop, the steering group met through four workshops. They started in June to talk about who, who is this group, what are the terms of reference? What some information about the background? And then in the summer, the group met to identify initial ideas for programming, which then informed the survey. So a lot of the ideas informed the survey design, the questions, and I'll review those in a moment. And then they met again in October to review the survey feedback. So I want to just say a big thank you to the volunteers. Many of them are behind me today. They did a lot of work. We kept them quite busy. They were very committed, very enthusiastic. They volunteered many hours. The survey process ran from September seventeenth to October fourth. And as staff, we assisted them to do in-person shifts, so they were very busy for two weeks. They did multiple hours of shifts at the fifty-five Brennan Park, the Squamish Library, and also at a tent set up at the Pavilion Park near the Squamish Farmers Market. And in addition, they also shared the survey out in their community networks. So they shared it online through their email networks, the distributed posters in person to businesses. They spoke to their own local organizations. They handed out information cards directly and all in all, trying to reach out and get more people to partake in the survey. And in addition, staff delivered some paper copies to our local senior residences. The kind of questions the survey asked were, first of all, sharing information. How do people get information? How can we make sure we get information out? And how to encourage more participation in the senior programming? And by the way, I'm saying the word senior, but we're using also the note here fifty-five plus for those age fifty-five and above. The survey also asked questions about the type of activities. So do people like dropping in versus pre-registered normalized programs? What what kind of group sizes are of interest to you? Are you interested in attending meeting greets? This is all very important and also learning about who is interested in self-organizing. Then the survey asked questions about fitness and health and then arts and culture. And the way it was divided was to ask questions about what is currently offered and what are some future ideas? And same with the arts and culture. And in both instances, the questions were geared to asking questions about or feedback on the fifth or West Winds, and also then people provided comments on the fifty-five and Brennan Park. And the survey ended with questions on group membership and what kind of, what kind of ways do you want to gather and also what what are the best times for programming? So the survey outcomes, we feel it was a great success. The group had a goal of five hundred respondents. They ended up with five hundred and twenty-seven people submitting a response. Four hundred, almost four hundred of them completely filled the survey. And this represents almost a seventy percent completion rate. So this is statistically significant, meaning that it tells us something about the community and that's a good number of people that having, that had responded. And we have around three thousand fifty-five plus people in the community. This represents about a sixty-six percent of the population that took part in the survey. And now another outcome is that we have data that's going to inform future programming as well, and the steering group overall achieved its mandate. I just cut and pasted some ideas here to show you how the survey shows itself in the response. The one question we asked are the, it was the age group, and it's important to note that the majority of people that responded were between fifty-five and seventy-five or older. And which is great, so they provided feedback, but also there was a percentage, let's say ten percent that are lower than, you know, younger than fifty-five. And this tells us that some people are interested about where they're going when they hit that older age bracket. Where are we all heading? We asked people to say something about how busy they are, and it looks like most of the, the people that responded were fully retired. But let's keep in mind that we also had some people that are fully, full-time workers and also part-time. So that was important to keep in mind in terms of how we program our activities. We asked questions about activity levels, and this tells us again, who are the kind of people that responded to the survey? A lot of people really are very happy with moderate activity levels, brisk walking or dancing, hiking. But there's those that are saying, okay, there's many of us here that that still like swimming and running and hiking, so don't forget about that. In terms of the age group, or sorry, the, the time span that people have lived here and responded to the survey, most of respondents have been here for fifteen years or more, and quite a few have been who are interested in the survey actually have been here only recently for one to ten years. And this graphic here shows how many people use the programming services of the district. About sixty-five did use the service prior to the pandemic, the COVID pandemic, but we also had thirty-five saying, thirty-five percent saying that they didn't. And so what's interesting to us is why didn't they? And this just summarizes for those that didn't use the services, why didn't they? And so we can see that some people moved here, affordability was an issue, accessibility, accessibility was an interesting one. It wasn't only whether there was a bus or parking accessible at the venue, but also are the activities themselves accessible for hearing, for seeing? And if I have a cane or a walking chair, can I move around to partake in that activity? So that was something to think about that was important. And some people said that there was nothing that was of interest or and also another one was that the registration process made it difficult with a bit of a barrier for why they didn't partake in the activities. Why would fifty-five people, fifty-five plus seniors like to see, what would like to see more of? Well, we heard from them that they'd like to see drop-ins. This actually was top of the list because a lot of people are happy for the activities, but they love the idea of dropping in and casually meeting and meeting with each other and meeting new people. And some people said they want to try before they sign up. And the examples here were given to do activity fairs, program fairs, so that people can see what's happening and maybe test things before diving in for a longer activity program. Smaller sizes was a big one for a lot of people. They were very interested in a smaller, safe group, cozy group, people that they can get to know, feel comfortable with. And more likely would they then come out and leave the home and take part in activities? And again, meet and greets, that was a very big, big feature. In terms of interest in the future, on the health and fitness side, we had people showing that they're very interested in quite active sports from snow sports or paddling sports to getting out, doing more active bus trips, but also happy with more moderate level activities like Tai Chi type of activities and more offerings of dance classes. And on the arts and culture side, the respondent said they'd like to see more craft programming, technology training, which would be things like anything from computer training, how to use your cell phone to retirement discussions. And also food-related gatherings was seen as important. This, this slide speaks to some cross-cutting themes that came across throughout, throughout the whole survey process. And what, what I saw was that it's really important to consider those that are still working. So these aren't necessarily listed in order of importance. They were all important. These are the themes that rose up the most often. And so people want to see more active programming. Some noted the importance of inter-generational classes, that eight to eighty approach, bringing youth into classes where it's appropriate. And on the right side here, the social gathering point here is this came across a lot, both tied to venues, but also generally that seniors are very excited and interested in social gathering, having that place for connection to allow, again, the drop-ins, the meeting greets, connections for breakfast, right to dinner. I heard all sorts of ideas, but really it's that safe place outside of the home. That was the point there. And then the last two, talking about mobility therapy. Not only are there folks, all of us, you know, have, you know, aching bodies, I was going to say aging bodies, but aching bodies and importance of thinking about therapy activities. And again, bus and parking and accessible programs was important. So these are the cross-cutting themes across all. So in terms of West Winds, the learnings we had here were that there's an array, you can see the array of activities that jumped out as more important to folks, for example, like the table type, ping pong type activities or, or meeting at West Winds to go off on a hiking trip. Dance business and yoga, another one was balancing and stretching activities. These were seen as very feasible at West Winds. And on the arts and culture side, activities around painting or drawing or again, bus trips from West Winds and even quilting and more crafting opportunities there that rose up as well. Some of the top concerns that were raised was the two bullets top and the bottom, near the bottom around accessibility. And and the size of the space, these are, people were, and also the commenter are not enough to know about the design. Some people were not sure about the design of the building to know how to comment, but for those that were considering it, they were saying, well, let's not forget about accessibility and parking. And the question here was whether there was sufficient parking for the people that are visiting the residents versus those visiting for programming. So that was just a comment to think about. Some responses were related to whether the building catered more to older seniors. And if that was the case, then it had a, it made sense to have a rehabilitation approach. And also a concern around whether there was availability of programming in other locations beyond the two P M mark at West Winds. So in terms of the best times for group to gather, you could see here in the middle that the afternoon was the big, the more important time for most, but a lot of people said morning was good. And in fact, evening was still important at over forty percent of the respondents. And this ties in with those that are still working and busy or caregiving. So just these next slides will just outline some of the top features related to the activities. At the fifty-five, what was important was that it's a fun place. It's a fun place to go for events, for drop-ins. And of course, take classes and education or social programs, the fitness that still goes on there, continuing, continuing with movement, but also adding in socials to either follow or happen before events. And if they could be tied to food, that was what was seen as important. And at Brennan Park seems to be that because of the fact that there's the pool there and there's some neurofit programming and aerobic fitness, that it's the active center. And the fact that there's the bus availability there for pickup and drop off made it, made it more desirable. And the takeaways here, this summarizes what I was just mentioning, that the fifty-five was seen as a very important place to the seniors, that it's a place of connection. And even without activity offerings. And that it's important here that seniors used, they used it as a social gathering place in the past. They would like to see it that way in the future. They see it as a great, vibrant and working, welcoming venue for activities, muffins, coffee chats, et cetera. And to be able to still can take part in programming that takes advantage of the natural light that's available there. Brennan Park being more on the pool and active fitness side and West Winds having a useful for therapeutic recreation or discussion groups and other activities related to arts and crafts. So the steering group, then we presented to the steering group the survey summary. And we discussed together at that last meeting in October, and we came up with these recommendations that it's sort of a branded approach where the West Winds would be a hub for rehabilitation and wellness. The fifty-five being more of the social hub, Brennan Park being more of the cardio hub. And also that there could be a new advisory group under new terms of reference to collaborate with staff on programming and senior-related issues, and this would be supported by staff.
If I may take a moment to just speak to the recommendation of the steering group. The, the exercise of gathering the input from the seniors community allowed staff and the steering group the opportunity to gather a lot of, as you see today, very valuable feedback about program, programming development. But also it led to comments and observations from the steering group that reinforce the benefit of establishing a broad advisory group to continue to offer these insights. And so I, I understand that there's some tension in the community right now, and I do want to put at ease that we are presenting these findings on behalf of the steering group. And that there's no intention for this recommendation to displace the senior center society.
And this graphic just summarizes what I just mentioned in terms of the fifty-five moving through active movement to, to other opportunities there that currently exist and will continue to exist. And the West Winds being therapeutic hub, fitness rehabilitation approach, and Brennan Park representing a more active fitness hub. So for next steps for staff, depending on council decisions, staff would focus on programming on across the three facilities and then implement a strong communication strategy. It was important for everyone. Well, quite a few people in the survey responded on the need to clearly know what programming is happening across the district venues. And again, just a reminder, the council endorsement, seeking your endorsement for and accepting the engagement summary report and recommendations from the steering committee, steering group. And then we have time for feedback and questions.
Thank you very much. I will also, before I go out to counsel, just acknowledge that counsel has received a letter from Mr. Vesely dated October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, and that is in front of counsel. Counsel, questions? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you. I know the library is out of the scope of, of this and runs their own, governed by their own board, and we heard from them earlier today, but it struck me through even your presentation as far as collecting the survey at the library. You know, and then book clubs, technology kind of leads into this lecturing, lectures were mentioned, and I kind of, I wondered if this, if the results of the survey were shared with, with the libraries, they would be potentially provide some programming in this area? And maybe we could identify some gaps that need filling or they can take that information forward and, and do as they see fit. Just wondered the library's involvement.
Yes, thank you for the question. Absolutely. Library director participated in the early stages of this process. As well as we addressed with the steering committee, the library programming, recreation services programming always work hand in hand and closely together. We're always, we're always programming in the spirit of community and never in competition. And we work quite collaboratively to meet the needs of the specific demographics.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Pat O'Neil?
Thank you. A couple of things. I, I was thinking when I saw some requests for music programming. I attend a private, a local school, and a lot of my classes have a fair number of seniors, some are majority seniors, I would say. And it just got me thinking about, you know, was there any discussion about where, where the sort of line is, or is there a line between, you know, the sorts of programming that we provide as a municipality, whereas, you know, other independent, private, for-profit, not-for-profit operators take over programming? And are we, do we have a sense that we are sort of the introductory taste and, and when you want to go more advanced, that's where you go to those others? Or where are we in that mix?
Thank you for the question. Recreation services specifically will always be the introductory and more low barrier entry to new experiences and new hobbies. That being said, we, and the, the programming component of recreation services, not just specific to seniors, is not immune to, to the trends in the community and, and as we have seen with pickleball as an example. Activities and classes go through their own lifecycle and us as staff base our programming on the interests of the community and those demands that we're starting to see rise up. And so this report specifically is, provides a great foundation for future years for staff to not just guess, but to also match what they're seeing day to day with, with the statistically relevant voices in the community that we heard.
Thank you. And then my next question, there were a couple of comments from seniors wishing to do more self-organized activities. And I'm wondering if there is much discussion or any conclusions about what the barriers are, what we might change to make it easier for seniors to take advantage of the facilities sort of on their own without our, you know, without us doing programming, maybe just providing space.
Yes, thank you. That's a good question. In fact, that, there was comment on that in the, in the questions on self-organizing and exactly that, that if the district could take a role that was more facilitative hosting venues and really letting the self-organized group do the rest.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I guess my last thing, I was a little bit unclear. I saw we broke down the respondents by age. Did we look at language, ethnicity, culture, any of those backgrounds? And, you know, in particular, I'm wondering if, how much of this is reflective of our Sikh seniors, our indigenous seniors? And just drilling on that in particular, I understand for a number of indigenous seniors and residential school experiences, sort of a more institutional set- sort of a more institutional setting is not entirely welcome. And so it made me wonder, you know, did we get feedback from these people? Um, and, you know, are the spaces appropriate? Or for some programming, maybe none of our current facilities are really the appropriate space because of historical traumas and so on. And and do we need to be thinking about programming in other spaces? So we, did we have an opportunity to dig into these sorts of questions and to understand? Um, you know, culturally and so on, is this reflective of of the whole community?
Uh, those are, pardon me, those are very good questions. Um, those specifically uh did not fall within the scope of uh this particular programming exercise with the steering group as uh we were focused on um uh the three facilities. Um, but as an extension of that, and as the uh steering group um noted as important for uh future considerations or future um aspirations. The um, this is what makes the hub, uh, the neighborhood hub model uh so interesting is that um then beyond these three existing buildings with their existing walls, um, further programming can be contemplated that does in fact reflect um the cultural sensitivity that we need to be adopting in this time.
Also, any other questions?
Mary Ellen. Thank you. Um, so one of the the uh concepts is that the fifty five will be branded as sort of the social hub. And so, and then we got feedback from forty two percent of people that really want to see evening time. And there was this concept that's from earlier reports that seniors would have it for the day, and then we would open it up um to other age demographics in the evening. But what I'm seeing in this report is that, in fact, uh, many of our fifty five plus are still working. And I know when I get to that milestone, I definitely will be because, yeah, I've been a politician for eight years almost. So um, so how do we then align that with the hours at the fifty five? And how do we protect those evening timeframes so that seniors aren't in competition with the younger demographic? But that time for those self organized groups or some of the evening activities that makes sense to hold that there? How are they not in competition with our our other age demographics?
Um, thank you. It it's definitely an interesting thought, and I I think the answer right now is that it's both. I think using the lens of community programming and with the onboarding of uh the youth hub um in the next year and now having three programmable recreational facilities. I think that um staff do believe that there is the ability to have shared uh experiences and accommodation in all of our buildings.
But just to follow up on that, yeah, we only have the West Winds till two. Brennan Park is not really a comfortable social hub in its current iteration that could change with um the revitalization of that center. And so that really just leaves the fifty five. And I guess um as 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 we adopt this plan and how do we make sure that there are some evening time slots where there there aren't children in there, there's just the fifty five plus crowd?
I would say if that's um a concern of council, staff can take that away and uh make a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure it's a concern. It's just that you you know, if you're having a social event around the the kitchen or in the lobby and using the great room, and then you've got other someone else's programming or the back in the center, then you've got people walking through all night through someone else's event. So I'm just, I'm just asking staff that we contemplate that we may need to set aside some evenings of the week um that don't include multi generational program.
Definitely, sure.
And then the other, I think, difficult thing to wrap my head around as we uh seek to to brand this as the social hub is that we haven't found in the past a business model that worked for the the kitchen and supplying food and coffee. And so where does that conversation go from here?
Yeah, um, uh, as you laid out, the the business model is tricky. And I think that that suggests that staff need to go away and uh either come up with a different model. Um, when the previous tenant of the kitchen um moved on, um, there still was the ab- ability for uh coffee and tea service. Um, and so staff can look at ways to introduce, you know, light snacks and muffins and things like that in a more in the size and scope that uh fit the uh current demand of the space.
I had another question, but it just.
I can come back.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Come back to me.
Councilor French.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Penningill's question about minorities and minority representation caused me to bring up the list of um the folks who participated in in this process, the thirteen individuals. And and I'm I'm very thankful for their participation and their involvement and their good work. It really strikes me that uh I I I know a number of the people who uh are on this in this group. It's very white. It's it's very colonial. And I'm I'm looking to staff for some reassurance that that's recognized and our minority populations will be represented as we move all this forward.
Um, it is recognized, uh, and staff had the same concern despite best efforts um in reaching out to um uh our Sikh community and our Filipino community.
Thanks, Chair. I hope that gives my colleague enough time to recall. I I don't I don't have anything else. I can't kill any more time.
You have to keep talking. Are you ready, Councilor? Mary Ellen? No, not ready. Okay. Councilor Penningill.
So um, we've been asked for an endorsement. Um, and there has been some questions and some acknowledgement that um there are some gaps in in parts of the community that participated. Uh, in staff's mind, were we to endorse this, what are the the next steps? Is is this something where we sort of start off here and then we we reflect and and adjust in six months? Or or, you know, sort of what what would what would happen next?
Staff would go away and um work towards uh an implementation plan based on the uh, based on the results of uh the survey and the findings and the and the recommendations of the steering group. This would uh get transferred. Um, I know there was a lot of people and a lot of different uh staff departments working on this, but this would get uh transitioned back uh specifically to Recreation Services um to implement uh within the budget uh over the next year.
Finished, Councilor? Have you finished, Councilor Redding?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mary Ellen.
Okay, finally came to me. Um, uh, you talk about this, uh, so taking the success of of this effort and um and creating a new advisory body. So is that uh to consult with on future programming and evaluating the implementation of this plan? What are you thinking the sort of terms of reference are for that group at this point?
Um, that's to be determined. Um, staff have not done uh, staff have communicated the recommendations of the steering group and of the community, and that needs to be um sourced and scoped. And uh, we need to determine what what that actually looks like moving forward.
I just wondered if there was any further information behind the recommendation. So it talks about recommendations to staff on programs and senior related issues, and that's very broad. So senior related issues at facilities or in programming. So just trying to get a sense of what's being proposed here.
Uh, that's, that's fair. I would ask that. Do you have a comment, please?
It was an attempt to keep it broad enough to to learn what those senior related issues would be. But um the scope of this whole effort was around the programming, recreational and cultural programming. And so that's why we put that in there in the language that way, not that it would be related to, I can't even think of what would be beyond the scope, but something out of scope. Related to, so it's programming related to seniors activities.
And how do you, will you go back to this steering group to help develop those terms of reference to bring to council? How, what is the next step there?
Uh, that has not been fulsomely contemplated. We are, uh, we have brought forth the recommendations of uh the steering committee.
The the challenge I'm having is how do I accept a recommendation that I don't quite understand at this point? So um yeah, Chair, I don't know how to resolve that, but I'll leave that in your hands.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? No. Uh, we have a recommended motion. And then we have time for comments. And perhaps comments uh on
by staff be be adopted uh with uh with respect to items one, two, and three. That is, the, there's four items enumerated here, but I wish to exclude the fourth item advisory group, and I would speak to that. So I'm moving that the recommendation of the steering, the three, first three recommendations of the steering group be uh adopted. And that uh staff um return to council with a report on an advisory group mechanism.
And before I go for a second, or is it possible to put the recommendations back up in the on the screen, please? Is there a second for that motion? I'll second it for discussion. No, I don't think it was that one. It was one prior to that that dealt with the recommendations. Okay, and just for clarity, then, uh, you are proposing resolution regarding the West Winds, the recommendation regarding the West Winds, the fifty five and Brennan Park. But the advisory group number four, Sean, is not part of your motion.
That is correct, Chair, and I'd be happy to speak to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It it occurs to me that the first three elements of the proposed uh four recommendations are um are is are matters that have evolved from the report. They speak to the results that the report has delivered. They relate to them, but not the fourth one. The report and the survey did not address advisory group. We didn't ask our seniors community about uh what kind of advisory group mechanism should work. I also feel that the first three issues will evolve over time. They relate to branding. And we've learned through the fifty five uh rebranding that this, that how this is used and how it plays out will evolve. It will evolve according to the end users and the use they make of the facilities. However, with respect to the advisory group, we have had distributed to us uh by the Senior Center Society a copy of a two thousand eight letter from Mayor Sutherland to the former Tantalus Senior Center Society, which the present society is evolved from. There's also a two thousand twelve collaboration agreement, which in my view is more important document formally signed off by the district and the society in two thousand twelve. So this is a worthwhile read as a keystone document and not least for facility planning and management still today. So the council committees, which worked to shape the mandate reflected in the two thousand twelve agreement, the reflected, the respective mandates, district and society. They involve longtime community volunteers, high profile community members, and also four former mayors. Mayors Lonsdale, Gardner, Kirkham, and Heinzman, all directly involved in shaping that collaboration agreement and the Senior Center Society's mandate. The Senior Center Society is a creation of council. It should be um, I think that we need to be careful as we have not only new staff, we have new consulting advisors, we also have new council members here since two thousand twelve. We should be careful of corporate loss of memory, and that is, I believe, what has happened here. It should be no surprise that senior sentences of society representatives would not only be disappointed at this resolution, this proposed advisory group, but they would be bewildered. That is the district uh bargaining in good faith, did it bargain in good faith back in two thousand twenty twelve? I think it's a fair question. I think that through the survey results, we see that there's a lot of knowledge built up over time. And I do agree with staff that it's a good foundational document with a lot of information and um perspectives. But there's lots of things that uh the Senior Center Society has and will be able to uh remind us of. And the hindsight's things that they never thought of back then, too. For example, the role of um of them in programming administration. In speaking with a number of their members, and their membership is quite large, uh, it seems to me that that might have been something that was overlooked ten years ago in the planning of the fifty five. What is the role of seniors in planning the programs? And maybe would we would have a better success with a better role? In this present survey, nobody is asking about this. There is a question on self organizing, but it does not relate to program administration for these facilities, and I actually think that should be revisited. So autonomy in programming administrations, lessons learned. These are things I think that we need to uh hold on to the opportunity to review these things with the Senior Center Society. And I think it is not appropriate that we uh, we, we, last time we reviewed this, we were going to have an advisory group to advise on a survey. But now all of a sudden, we're uh got a new mandate for a new advisory group, and I do not think that that is appropriate. We had an agreement in two thousand twelve, and I think that there's lots to uh to hold on to in our relationship with this very broad based society. Now, leave it at that. So this is why I'm proposing the first three elements be be adopted at this time, that but but that we continue to review with staff the provision of an advisory group.
Thank you. Mary Ellen.
Um, I'm not going to support the motion on the floor and because I, and I I did ask a lot of questions about this recommendation. And I'm not sure I support it in the way it's worded here. But we're entering new territory now with delivering in a very focused way fifty five plus programming over three facilities. And so that's not to diminish the role of the Senior Center Society in in helping to program that facility. But we're now spread across three, and I think this group's been very effective at at reaching quite a broad audience and getting the feedback. So so in some sense, I actually see that um uh, a, an advisory group to support staff as they implement this vision across the three facilities would be useful. Um, where I get a bit nervous is around the more vague senior related issues. So um, so I I think an advisory group to support staff through the implementation of the the three facility programming is appropriate and very useful. Um, because Um, because no doubt staff are going to run into challenges or opportunities that weren't imagined. Um, and new partnerships that will be there. And who better to turn to than the 55 plus community to get answers to those questions rather than our staff trying to figure out on their own which, what's the direction we should go here? Given this is a little bit different than what we had imagined. So, so I think that very, um, program-based advisory group, uh, makes sense to me. But I think maybe, and I, I am trying to sort of get in guests a little bit at the conversation is that there are many initiatives underway at the district from downtown streetscape planning to accessibility issues, to neighborhood planning, all those sorts of things. Where I think our 55 plus community definitely wants to have a voice. And so I think for me, I'd rather see staff come back with a recommendation on how we will engage seniors in our climate planning, our, our neighborhood planning, um, our downtown streetscapes, our accessibility work. That is, is much broader. And I would see a role for, for a group there in, in the same way that we now have a youth council advisory. You know, this is an opportunity to rethink how we're engaging with our seniors c- community on, on these much broader community planning initiatives. So, so I, I don't support taking it out. I think it, it definitely will serve a good purpose here as we implement this vision. So I, I won't be supporting the motion on the floor right now. Thank you, Chair.
Counsel, Herbert.
Thank you. I won't be supporting the motion as it, as it stands. I think the, um, the wording that we're excluding here, um, highlights develop a resident-based advisory group. And I think that, um, the various organizations in the community, um, can put their, their names forward to, uh, to participate in that and, and advise on, on, uh, the implementation of these recommendations. And just to sort of foreshadow that senior-related issues, uh, piece there is, is vague and maybe could, uh, be, be misleading or get some mission creep. But I do think some senior-related issues, um, at these, at the related, uh, facilities, um, might be a way to, to tie that together. But, um, as the motion on the floor, I won't be supporting. Thank you.
And just for clarity, it was me that seconded the motion for discussion. Any other members of council? Counsel, French.
Thanks, Chair. When I read through this report, I was a little surprised by, um, number four in the advisory group. Uh, and I recognize the sensitivity of this particular aspect of this project and the recommendation. Uh, I won't be supporting the motion. And, uh, my reason for it is I see that the senior center, a senior center society can and will play a very important role in, uh, the work of the advisory committee, uh, the, the advisory group. I, I, I recognize that, uh, um, historical knowledge that rests with the seniors center society. And, uh, I think that, um, the members of that group that participate in the advisory group will bring a great deal, um, to, to the group. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Uh, I also will not be supporting the motion. And I must admit, I've gone back and forth a little bit on this. Uh, at one point, as I was listening to the discussion, I thought, well, we could pass this motion. Uh, but that doesn't stop us from having a further motion and discussion around number four. Uh, but after listening to the comments, I think it's probably in my mind simpler to try to deal with the recommendation, uh, more or less as it is. The difficulty with number, I don't think there's any question about numbers one, two, and three in front of us. Uh, in fact, when I, when I read the report and saw that, I thought that was kind of a brilliant approach, which I wish I'd thought of myself to kind of allocate programming at these different venues, uh, according to use. And, uh, more or less the way staff has come up with, uh, I thought that was a great idea. And, and I actually would have met, um, you know, if the programming was right in the particular places, a lot of the concerns about people that are, uh, a little bit worried about having programming in some of these other spots. So the advisory group one, though, um, I'm not prepared to focus as the motion suggests on one group, uh, or suggests we should as an alternate. My concern is that I, I think back to when we started this process. Uh, and one of our instructions to staff was to, uh, not just go to one group, uh, for direction, uh, and feedback, but to make a real effort to consult with the broader senior, uh, population or over 55 population. And so certainly, uh, the Senior Center Society has a history that's been noted. Uh, they have a lot of knowledge, uh, and experience, uh, that's been noted. Uh, and I don't think there's any debate about that. Uh, but I think going forward, uh, what we are looking for is, uh, representation of, uh, a broader group still, uh, of the seniors, uh, community. Uh, and so I think that's what, what's in front of us, the recommendation number four, uh, reflects. And there might be some confusion around senior-related issues. And I was just trying to think what that might be or what might, might not be. I mean, are we sending old people to give financial advice on pensions and things like that? And, and then I thought, you know, yeah, maybe we are. Maybe that would be a very good program, uh, not necessarily our staff giving that advice, but getting people in that might give that advice. Uh, and so that kind of thing, uh, it is rather broad. It is a little bit fuzzy at the moment, uh, but I think that can be, um, sort of evolved, uh, to be something that is appropriate for our staff to get into. So I will not be supporting the motion, um, and will see how this motion makes out. But then would look for a motion, uh, to deal with all the recommendations. Any further comments? Counsel, Anderson.
Yes, just briefly, Chair. I just wanted to point out that one of the provisions of the 2012, uh, collaboration agreement signed off with the district and Senior Center Society is that the Senior Center Society was to take on that reaching out to other communities and constituencies within the community's seniors, uh, because our community of seniors, including the Sikh, uh, community and Squamish Nation elders. So that that was delegated to the Senior Center Society. And they've been doing that, been doing that for years and had previously. And that was a, well, that was an explicit task and responsibility assigned and taken on. So just to clarify that. And as we do the same thing with the Arts Council and the Squamish Community Foundation and other endeavors, where we delegate that responsibility and of course we take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? I'll call a question. Any opposed? Counsel, French, Mayor Elliott, Counsel, Pettingill, Counsel, Herbert, myself. Opposed, motion fails. Counsel, Pettingill.
Yeah, just have a question for staff before someone moves, uh, something else. Just looking at the recommendations, it's not specific to ours or any of the other things that were discussed, is it? Staff's expectation that were the, the resolution as presented is, is passed, that, um, things like the hours would still be determined? Or is the assumption that sort of what's here assumes everything else? That was discussed in more detail in the report as well?
I'm going to lead the response with an omission of error in our report that, um, said, uh, staff, uh, abide by the, the, the previous, uh, direction, uh, that the 55 would be, uh, exclusively seniors between the hours of nine and four. May I ask for further clarification of your question, Counselor?
Yeah, I think, you know, uh, based on some Mayor Elliott's comments about, do we need to set time aside on evenings as well exclusively for seniors at the 55 and so on? So given some of the feedback in the survey and some of the comments at council, um, do staff anticipate that even, you know, if the resolution as proposed was passed, there might still be consideration to some of those things about hours and adjusting beyond what was initially discussed in the report?
Absolutely. It is, uh, staff's hope and, uh, excitement that the information provided, uh, coming out of this survey, um, informs, uh, a vibrant and, um, diverse, uh, inventory of programs for, for seniors across three facilities, but specifically, uh, in the 55 as, uh, staff have recommended branding.
Counsel? Mayor Elliott?
So I, I want to move the staff recommendation, but, um, just clarify the wording on the fourth one, that, uh, the advisory group under new terms of reference with a mandate to collaborate with and provide recommendations to staff on programs. And, uh, I recommend yourself on programs and seniors-related issues connected to, what is the title of this report?
Connected to the 55 Recreation and Cultural Programming Report.
That's the one. Um, and yeah, if there's a second, or I'll speak to it.
Seconded by Counsel, Herbert. Uh, did staff get that? And that would include also, for clarity, the committee would be supported by district staff, which focuses on seniors issues? That's it? No? Okay. So that's
Well, the committee would be supported by district staff, period.
Okay. That's okay with the second? Did staff get that part? Yep. And so just for the microphone, for the public that weren't able to hear that, the last sentence, instead of reading what you see there, would be this committee would be supported by district staff, period. And that was seconded by Counsel, Herbert. Any further discussion? Mayor Elliott?
So, um, I think the thing about the advisory group piece was that it seemed, it seemed to go quite broad. And, uh, that wasn't necessarily the mandate of, of this group. But I definitely see value in, in continuing with a group to help with the implementation of these recommendations. There's really good information and data here. And, and I don't think it will be necessarily easy or straightforward to get this implemented, implemented through our, our programming, uh, without the advice and ongoing support of, of folks in the 55 plus community. I, I recognize that the previous mandate counsel gave was for, uh, programming at the seniors, uh, center, now the 55, to be from nine till four. But we have new data that shows that 40, over 40% of respondents want to see evening programming. Uh, the other two venues, uh, certainly if you're doing cardio, then Brennan Park works in the evening. But that social piece, the cultural piece, that leaves the center, um, for programming. And so while I'm sure the facility can be shared intergenerational, intergenerationally, I think sometimes it can't be. And I just really want us to be sensitive to that fact, that we have to respond to new information that's been presented to us as a council that, um, that, uh, our 55 plus community might want to sort of own this space a couple nights a week, if, if that's what's required to get the programming in that they're looking for. So I don't want us to be limited, limited by that previous mandate, given the new information presented to us today. So thanks, uh, everyone for your work on this, to the volunteers. Um, it takes a lot of work in this community to get people to respond to surveys. And a 6% return is incredible. That's an impressive effort. And I know it would have taken a lot of, of outreach and, um, cajoling and asking. And so really appreciative of the steering committee, uh, for, for making this happen and providing us with such good information on which we can make decisions. So, uh, kudos to them and thanks very much.
Thank you. Counsel, Herbert.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. I, um, I also would like to, um, just thank everyone involved in this process. The, the, uh, the return on the surveys is, is remarkable and gives us, um, a broad enough picture to be able to make recommendations that, um, such as the ones before us. And, uh, I'd love to, I'm looking forward to seeing that work, uh, continue. Hopefully that, uh, uh, can continue through the implementation. And, um, and thank you so much for the, for the work. I think, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing this model sort of fully realized at, uh, at whatever, at whatever point, uh, we, we can call it that as these things are, are ever evolving as, and as Mayor Elliott, um, pointed out, the, um, return on surveys is, is important, but also, um, acting on that information, um, i- is important and leaving enough room for us to, to adjust. And, and the first thing that does come to mind is that, is that evening scheduling, um, when appropriate. Um, and, uh, luckily we have this, uh, advisory group to help us wade through how we can, uh, possibly achieve that, given, uh, all the, the goals we have for the various facilities. But, uh, thank you so much for the work.
Thank you. Counsel, French, Counsel, Pettingill, Counsel, Anderson, and then I'll put myself on the list.
Thanks, Chair. Um, speaking in support of this motion, uh, as an individual who is knocking on the door of 55 plus, I'm thinking about my friends, my social group, um, that do fall into the 55 plus category. Uh, I don't see them using our, uh, seniors facilities in the daytime. Uh, so I truly believe that evening gap needs to be addressed. And, uh, looking forward to, I'm moving forward to address that, um, that evening gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel, Pettingill, Counsel, Anderson, and myself.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, a few things. I really appreciate the work and the amount of response we got from the community on, on the survey. I guess in my mind, I see us still though as very early in the process. And I think the, um, the sort of initial thought of, of what these facilities, how they will be used, makes sense, uh, to, to try it out. In, in my mind, I would almost like to see a similar survey repeated every year. I, I think there's going to be a lot of trial and error and experimentation, I hope, adjustment. I think already some of the feedback about making sure there's dedicated evening program at the 55 makes sense. For me, I'm really curious to see what we can do to remove barriers so that, um, self-organized programming is, uh, we see a lot more of that. And the other piece, um, r- related to the advisory group, I, I don't feel yet that, just in the last couple of years and the emails I've received, um, in what we've seen in the survey yet, that we are capturing our, our whole community. And so I, you know, I, I think that's a gap that we all have to figure out a way to fill. And, you know, that may come down to council seeing what we've seen. You know, maybe we need to start having some direct one-on-one coffees and, and collecting some feedback that way. But, um, that, that's a, a gap that I, I think, um, needs to be addressed as well. And, and this resolution, I think, leaves room to address some of those things, uh, while also giving us a great jumping off point to start trying what I hope will be a lot more activity, a lot more vibrancy at the 55. And, you know, I guess I'm eager to see this, all these facilities, uh, the West Winds when it becomes available, the 55 now, uh, being a lot more active, especially with seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Anderson?
Thank you. Uh, just for clarity, it is my understanding the, the resolution we're voting on, uh, the change has been made to provide recommendations to staff on 55 plus recreation and culture programming recommendations. And that is a resolution that I can support. Uh, there's two themes that emerged from, for me in this report. And one, um, is the kitchen at the 55 and the coffee hub. It comes up again and again. And, uh, the social hub, um, how we make that work is so important. And I'll look forward to how we together, uh, work that through. Uh, there, the previous councils have visited that issue. I'm, I'm not apprised of, of, uh, the deliberations, but the deliberations will continue and they're very important. Secondly, there's been lots of lessons learned over the years. Uh, the, the council struck a committee in 2004 to start planning for the 55. The minutes The minutes and recommendations of all those committees since 2004 are available in the compendium, and they're still today very interesting reading. Let's not throw out all of that brainstorming work and lessons learned. As a frequent visitor for periods of time at the 55, and also being involved from time to time in delivering programs there, I think that we need to explore how to give programming responsibility and autonomy to seniors. I think that they have, over time, and we've seen, and there's a lot of continuity within their group over these years, they can point out where the lessons have been learned on how we could have done better in, with better success, with responsibilities allocated differently. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also be supporting this motion. And, and I agree with the comments, my fellow counselors, and I'm not going to repeat them. And the only comment I will make, though, is with respect to the 55, is noted by the mayor that, you know, somehow we'll have to share the programming space. It occurred to me during the presentation and the comments afterwards that not everybody has to be there at the same time or all the time. And so I think it should be easy enough to try to figure out a schedule to allocate some time for exclusivity for a variety of different groups, including seniors. So with that in mind, I will call the question, are there any opposed? And then opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And I will add, before I let everybody go, my thanks to staff for this. This was quite good. And my great thanks to your committee behind you, some of you behind you, some of them who are no stranger to this room. And thank you very much for your efforts on behalf of your community. We're a little behind in our agenda, but I think at this point I'm going to declare a 15 minute recess. We will come back at 3:30. Thank you and welcome back. We are on item five, sub two, Community Grant Policy Amendment and Community Events Update. The sticker. What is yours?
Thank you, counsel. And thank you for your time today. I'm aware that we're behind, so I'm going to make this as brief as possible. My name is Sarah Dicker, and I am the Acting Manager of Arts and Culture. I'm joined today by Devin Guest, who is the Acting Director of Recreation. And we are presenting some community grant policy amendments and also a recommendation on the unallocated community event portion of funding within the grant budget. So today I'm going to be providing the purpose of today's presentation, a background on the community grants, and also the events funding. And I'll be splitting my presentation kind of into two portions for your consideration. And then additionally, some staff recommendations at the end. So the purpose of today is to provide counsel with the draft community grant policy amendment. And this is based on counsel's direction to staff during the June 22nd Committee of the Hall and further ratified by counsel in July, along with some recommendations for the final portion of the unallocated grants funding. Staff will be addressing and providing recommendations for the remaining unallocated grant funding that was originally earmarked for community events. So we're going to head into our community grant amendments. A brief background on the, on the community grants. The policy was amended and the new policy adopted in October of 2020. Some grant agreements were adopted as well or approved with the community foundation and also with the Arts Council, who have been running the new grant programs and are going into their second round of granting. And the amended agreements were approved by counsel in July, and that basically aligned the agreements with the fiscal year and helped to have a more efficient process on both sides. And then, along with that report that counsel provided to, or that staff provided to counsel in June of 2020, oh, 2021, counsel provided staff with some direction to amend the policy further, to provide clarity on granting to sports groups along with religious and political organizations. And so during the process of staff's amendments to the policy, a review was done of neighboring municipalities. And staff found that many municipalities keep the scope of their policies at quite a high level and do not specifically address religious, political, or sports organizations. So taking counsel's direction into consideration, staff went and consulted with the two community grant organizations, the Community Foundation and the Squamish Arts Council. And staff found that the two community grant organizations were overall in support of counsel's recommendation to amend the policy. And that the Squamish Community Foundation's policy was aligned with counsel's ask. And so taking that into consideration, staff amended the policy to align with the Squamish Community Foundation's policy. So the policy amendments include amendments to the religious and political granting. And so this, the new amendments prohibit granting to these groups for religious or political purposes. So they don't necessarily exclude religious or political groups applying for granting, but they cannot apply for, apply and be granted funds for specifically religious or political purposes. And then going into sports organizations, our policy already prohibited granting to groups that were not registered not-for-profits or charities. But this further provides direction to the groups that they cannot apply for funding if they are not, if they don't fall into one of those two categories. And further to those amendments, the community grant organizations have matrices that ensure that grant funds are aligned with the community grant policy. And this includes ensuring that grant funds are broadly benefiting the community and that additional fundraising is being done in the community and that collaboration with other groups is also occurring. So there were, the community group, sorry, the community grant organizations wanted to ensure that groups that are benefiting the community broadly and that do fall into sports or recreation, that category, that they are still eligible to apply for grants. So now I'll be moving into the community event funding portion of the presentation. And so a background on this is going back to January of 2020, where staff presented the first draft of the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy. And some feedback to staff at that point was that counsel were not in support of staff coordinating our community events. Further to that, staff came back to counsel with an amended grant policy. And during that process, counsel had directed staff that they did not want to single out specific events to fund. And those events at that time were named in the report as the Canada Day Parade, the Santa Claus Parade, and the Pumpkin Patch in the Park. And those events had traditionally been organized and grants provided to the Downtown Squamish Business Improvement Association for the purpose of running those events. And so counsel's direction at that time was to include it in the overall granting bucket or grant fund, which is divided between the Community Foundation and the Squamish Arts Council. There were some feedback from those groups that they didn't necessarily want to make a decision on whether or not these community events got funded. And so we kind of had this portion of funding unallocated. And that was unallocated for a number of reasons, including the pandemic and uncertainty of the events landscape at that point. So at this time, staff are bringing forward the recommendation for these funds. And staff also would like to note that the community, sorry, the Downtown Business Improvement Association has communicated to staff that they are no longer interested in running the Canada Day event on behalf of the community. So the pandemic has had quite a big impact on the events industry, and they're still recovering and probably will be one of the last sectors to recover. A shift in the focus of local event organizers, such as the Downtown Squamish BIA, has been to provide more long lasting or impactful events that the community can benefit from year round, such as the Squamish Downtown Squamish BIA mural walk. We've also seen an increase in civil rights activities. And this has been noted in the Lower Mainland as well. Staff are part of a working group with other municipal event organizers in the Lower Mainland. And the Lower Mainland is noting up to about 140% increase in civil rights activities. And so discussions are happening in that events group about how we support this on a municipal level as we're seeing this trend only going up and not stopping at this point. And also during 2020s, counsel did endorse the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy, which supports establishing an easier process for event organizers. And staff believe that providing support through traffic management is a cost effective way to ease process for community event organizers. And this is supported broadly by tactic 1.1 and 5.2 in the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy. So the recommendations for the events portion of funding is that the $18,500, which was originally earmarked to be used for support of community events, be split between the Squamish Community Foundation and the Squamish Arts Council through an amended grant agreement with both parties. And that the service level increase that had been originally submitted by the Public Works Department, excuse me, for Canada Day Parade support actually be shifted to and amended to support traffic management at community events and civil rights activities. And so the recommended motions are before counsel, I'm not going to read through, as I'm sure you've read through your support, but they, or read through your reports. But they basically are to amend the grant policy to allocate $12,500 additional dollars to the Squamish Community Foundation as part of the grant program and a further $6,000 to the Squamish Arts Council as part of their grant program. And that counsel considers as part of the 2022 budget discussions, a service level increase of $13,700 to support traffic management and public safety at community events and civil rights activities. And I'll now take some questions.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Pettingill?
Thank you. A couple of things, and this first one maybe, I suppose maybe more for counsel. But reading through the criteria of the organizations, I know in our policy, we have some high level expectations we've set. But in the Arts Council criteria, they had two specific criteria, which I felt were very strong, involves a diverse representation of community, including Squamish's vulnerable, marginalized, or underrepresented populations, and supports the District of Squamish official community plan and strategic priorities, decolonization and reconciliation, intergenerational programming, neighborhood connectivity, environment equity and diversity, physical and mental health, social wellbeing, youth law initiatives. And it goes on a little bit. But I didn't see something as strong in the Community Foundation criteria. And I guess I found myself wishing that was there, too. I felt those two criteria, to me, seem really important and aligned with a lot of our discussions. So I'm wondering if there's a, what the best way would be to sort of strengthen that piece of the criteria.
Thank you through the chair. The community grant policy specifically outlines those criteria that you're mentioning, Counselor Pettingill. And it is up to the community grant organizations to create their own criteria based on counsel's policy. And so while the Arts Council's matrix specifically outlines those specifics, the Community Foundation does not. Now, if counsel wants to provide that feedback to the Community Foundation, staff can certainly do that, and we can advise them to amend their criteria to be more specific in those, in those points. But at this point, it's not required of the foundation, and they have taken a more broad approach where it comes to focusing on the OCP as well. Their, their programs or their grant is a more wide reaching grant. And so I think it would be difficult for them to have all of those criteria and go through. But that's not, that's not out of the scope of what we can ask them to do.
Okay, maybe this leads into my second question, though. And I guess, you know, as just some of the points, it seems reasonable that they could include that and still support a lot of the asks, it just helps direct them a bit. But are we tracking who is applying from a demographic perspective to know? Are all portions of our community applying for these? Whether or not they're successful, even is everyone trying to apply? Or are we missing portions of our community and who's even reaching out for these grants?
Thank you through the chair. The, both of the grant organizations will be coming to counsel at the end of the year. I believe they're scheduled tentatively in November at this point. And so I think a detailed presentation from both of those organizations may be able to answer your questions, Counselor Pettingill. For today's presentation, I'm not prepared with those statistics, per se. More focused on the task that counsel asked staff to complete. Thank you.
I will add that the Community Foundation is a registered charity in the Canada Revenue Act and can only donate to what are called qualified donies, which are registered charities or government bodies. So that alone excludes a lot of different types of organizations. And it's possible for an individual or group of individuals not incorporated to register as a charity. But in most cases, they happen to be societies, nonprofits that get that registration. So they are, I don't know about the Arts Council, but they are restricted to that extent right off the bat. Counsel, any other questions? Oops, sorry. Sticker, go ahead.
Thank you, counselors. I just wanted to clarify that the Community Foundation do want back to have that restriction. However, they do not like put the checks, per se, to the groups. It's done through the district. And so they are not limited in the fact that they can only grant to charities. They can also grant to not-for-profits through the working relationship that has been established with staff.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Counselor Pettingill?
I guess I would move the recommendation, but I would add that, try and add that staff provide feedback to the Community Foundation about more explicitly including those additional criteria.
So let me just be clear on the motion. Is it the recommendation with a comment, or do you want that in the motion?
I was going to try with it in the motion and not as a deal breaker criteria, just, you know, in the, in the matrix of points.
Go ahead, Mary Elliott.
Can I just ask a question of clarity before this gets seconded? Do you want, so I don't think it's fair for us to say you should look at the Arts Council's language and put it in yours. So are you saying more specificity related to diversity and inclusion? Like, I guess, what I'm, what are you trying to ask them to include? And if you could specify that, rather than saying it has to be the same as?
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking for is something that more explicitly addresses those criteria. It doesn't have to be those. So the two I mentioned involves a diverse representation of community, including Squamish's vulnerable, et cetera, et cetera, and supports the District of Squamish OCP and strategic priorities, decolonization and reconciliation, intergenerational programming. Just something that addresses those a little more directly.
Before I ask for a second, or I also have a question. Did we not enter into an agreement with the Community Foundation when we started this process? And does it deal with that point? Did we not enter into an agreement with the community foundation when we started this process? And does it deal with that point?
Thank you, councillors. I'm just asking the corporate officer to pull up the policy. And as I believe the policy gives the power or the responsibility to the community grant organizations to establish. And publish matrices and it does not. Give council that authority and I'm not sure whether we are operating under the intent of the policy if we are being specific that specific with. The groups, the intent of council, I believe, was to separate this process a little bit and de-politicize it. And so. That is all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor. Is it anybody seconding? Seeing none, motion fails. Is anybody prepared to move the recommendation? Counselor Anderson moves. Mary Elliot seconds. Any comments? Counselor Pedden go.
Yeah, thanks. I take staff's point, I guess, as part of my uncertainty about. Where the matrix fits and where we can tweak it or adjust it. So I'll just leave it as a a comment then that I think. I do appreciate how the arts council that portion of their matrix and I think that's quite valuable. We'll also look when we see the in-depth reporting about who is applying for and receiving these grants to sort of understand how it's flowing through at the end of the day. But I do appreciate as well the the work that both these organizations are doing. I also had a chance, I think it was last week to see staff's presentation. With the both groups as well to the community informing people about how to apply and so on. And I thought that was really worthwhile in terms of. Helping our local citizens and groups understand how they can access these. I think that's a really important piece and a piece and I was very glad to see that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call a question, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, I know the agenda calls for recess, but we just had one. Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Dicker.
Sorry, councillors, there are four motions on the table. I don't know if you want to pass them separately.
My understanding was it was the staff recommendation which included all of them, but I'll go to the mover. Counselor Anderson, was it?
Chair, this was my interpretation that the recommendation included was inclusive of all four components.
In the second, or believe that? Yes. So that was the motion on the floor. So I don't propose to take another recess right now and go directly to. Item five, three, which is community climate action plan implementation activities. Mr. Pickett.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor Race. I'm just going to take a second here to get my presentation up.
Can you see that?
No, all we can see at the moment is you.
Oh dear, that's awful.
You said it, not me.
All right.
Now we can get it, but I think you're still in presentation mode.
There we go.
That's good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for bearing with me on that. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ian Picketts. I'm the manager of sustainability and climate change here at the District of Squamish. We are here today to provide an update on progress on the community climate action plan. For simplicity, I will be the only one to provide the presentation, but this is an effort of the entire sustainability team. So with us to answer questions are our transportation planner, Dora Gunn, our senior energy specialist, Kreen Ladue. And Jeff Wint, our sustainability coordinator. Unfortunately, Shannon White, our integrated solid waste specialist is unable to be here because there's a very important RTC that has to be finalized. Oh, did it? Sorry. Oh, it's gone to the end. Apologize. Just bear with me for one sec. Okay, so as an overview of this presentation, most of it is going to be dedicated to providing you with an update on progress on C cap implementation. Also, I'm going to take a couple of minutes and give you an update on community carbon marketplace feedback and we would be very interested to hear councils. Council's comments and suggestions on how we intend to go forward on that. So just for some very quick background, as you are well aware, our C cap outlines a plan to get us close to our targets of 45% emissions reductions by 2030. And working toward net carbon neutrality by 2050. And these numbers are earmarked against a 2010 baseline. We are focused on community emissions, so the the C cap does not include embodied emissions, it does not include emissions related to food. Or most land use change. And there's also an underlying assumption within the document that we have access to abundant low carbon electricity. So if that does change, the the C cap will have to be updated to to reflect that. But for now, these are the premises that we're working under. And the targets that we're working to work. So the plan has six big moves. Each big move has four to eight strategies. And each big move also has 10 to 23 actions associated with it. So the plan is, to be frank, it is a beast. It's it's quite big. And for today's presentation, we're just going to be presenting highlighting a couple actions that are ongoing related to each big move. Really encourage you to have a look at the at the spreadsheet and definitely open to discussing and hearing feedback about all of the actions. So to start off, I'm going to highlight a couple initiatives that we've that we've completed. This is a little bit, I understand this is a little bit of a limited slide in that. Very often completing something is just a gateway into further action. So just want to recognize that that I see the that I see that. But but these are some things that we've kind of crossed off and are moving on to the to the next steps. A couple that I'll highlight, one is that our demolition waste diversion bylaw is being implemented. I was really excited. I was at the FCM Sustainable Communities Conference last week and a councillor from another community highlighted this as a noteworthy action. And it was one of three examples taken from communities all across Canada. So that was really, really excellent to hear. We have received funding for an EV assessment using telematics. And our heat pump pilot project is has been approved. So we're going forward with that. Pardon me for one second. Our embodied carbon project has has been approved. So we can go forward with that in 2022 as well. And finally, I'd like to highlight that our that our MEET has been finalized, the Municipal Energy and Emissions Plan. This was a really, really big initiative that has a lot of. A lot of implications associated with it, but it really sets the sets us going forward for our municipal targets. Okay, so now I will transition to our ongoing and upcoming initiatives. For big move one, we have a couple of staff members dedicated to to this big move. So we're, there's a lot of action ongoing. One of which is we are about to engage in a forestry waste assessment sprint exercise. That is going to help us characterize the quality and quantity of wood waste in the area and identify opportunities for beneficial reuse. This will be done on in partnership with Squamish Nation. Also, our senior waste specialist is leading the lateral expansion project. The archaeological assessment has been initiated and plans that we are incorporating into the expansion include enhanced diversion. Circular economy considerations and a landfill gas system expansion to go along with the the new landfill. This image is of the the landfill gas system. There has been some part upgrades that have been suggested and those are on their way. And we are anticipating the flare to be live in early November. On the sea to sky food network strategy presented council to Whistler Council on October 6th. And this is a really forward thinking strategy that lays out ways that food distribution organizations such as Under One Roof can capture more food. And put it to the highest order and best use. So the the strategy lays out specific actions. And a next step is to discuss with local governments how they can help feed into the strategy. Also, economic development is taking the lead on circular economy. Circular economy roadmap. So this will be presented to business and climate leaders in our community in November. And the initial focus of the circular economy work is going to be on food waste, textiles and the built environment. For big move two, our transportation planner is working with Capital Works to improve AT infrastructure. So.
Can you just hold on for a sec, please? Mary Elliot.
I just catch food waste, textiles and.
I am the built environment, mostly embodied emissions associated with construction.
Thank you. Please continue.
No problem. So notable projects improve include the Pemberton Ave bike lanes, two corridor trail lighting projects. And bike lanes and sidewalks on Mamquam. These latter two are expected to be completed in summer of 2022. Documents and pamphlets from the Safe Route to School program have been distributed to schools. Actually will be distributed to schools ASAP as they are in their final review stage. Projects from the two new schools that have been added to the to the initiative, which are Waldorf and Montessori. Are already considered in the active transportation infrastructure planning process. Squamish and, sorry, Squamish Elementary in Garibaldi Highlands also participated in the hub cycle, everyone rides program. So it was great to see Squamish participation in this program, which is usually exclusively focused on the lower mainland. So a couple of images for your reference, one is a Pemberton Ave and the other is from our recent council bike. Our transportation is all transportation planner is also continuing to work with BC Transit. Toward increasing levels of service and improving transit infrastructure, including plans for a new transit maintenance facility. The district is also working with BC Transit on a transit future action plan, which includes proposals or improvements over the upcoming five years. Another project that we have just initiated is to work with senior UBC students on a study related to current and and expected. Challenges related to parking and automobile dependence in general. So the study will likely include on street and off sheet street parking considerations and will focus on downtown. And another addition to this project is going to be. Considerations about recreational equipment storage. As you're probably well aware, in Squamish. People's recreational interests and equipment. Very much changes the amount of off-street parking that is actually available for vehicles. So we're. Going to try to creatively incorporate that into the strategy and into this project so that it is reflected. For big move three, the municipal energy and emissions plan was adopted in July and it includes very ambitious fleet electrification goals. One of which is to electrify our garbage fleet. So we have just started working towards implementing the targets that are outlined in the MEET. Another interesting project is we received $10,000 from a motive to do outreach activities focused on the sea to sky. So we hosted a webinar in September and there were over 80 people in attendance, which is really exciting. And we're also in the very final stages of creating ambassador stories and videos. So these are two still shots from the videos. And they're really quite dynamic and well done. The production team was very highly motivated to take on this. So we we really got. A lot of value out of it. So really excited for you to see those quite soon. Also, we don't have an official update yet, but we do have the funding application in to to both the federal and provincial governments for over a million dollars. In new public EV infrastructure development. And we're really hopeful to hear about that very soon. Early November is the last date we've been told that we will, we will know. So for big move four. We also got a lot of strong direction on how to move forward municipally from the MEET. One, one project that we're we're moving right ahead with is an energy study of the Brennan Park Recreation Study. This is 75% funded by the Fortis BC Custom Energy Study Program. And the final report actually just got forwarded to me earlier today. So yeah, it's moving, moving right along. It will include recommendations for energy retrofit measures and capital incentive funding. Capital incentive funding offers for implementation of the measures. There is a larger funding application in place for. A substantial amount of retrofit activity with Brennan Park. As you recall from our conversations with the MEET. It is somewhere in the order of 33% of our municipal emissions are associated with this one vehicle, sorry, with this one building. And the Brennan Park Center alone could exceed our corporate target. So it's definitely a that a top highlight for for movement. Also have identified an opportunity to upgrade HVAC systems at the Squamish Adventures System Center. This is concurrent with the tourism grant project. So the gas fired rooftop units are to be replaced with electric air source. For the community side, we are really excited to be moving forward quickly on an energy retrofit strategy. So this is helping homeowners to improve the efficiency and to sometimes. Energy switch in their own homes. So we're beginning with capacity building with local contractors. They're a very trusted source of information. And we want our contractors to have the the best information and also to be able to to help. Residents to access utility provincial and federal rebates and grants. So that is a really first, a first entry point that we're working toward. And this will go forward into 2022 and our plan is is to build directly on the heat pump pilot program. So build on that concierge model. And the the initiatives that get kind of piggybacking on the initiatives that are in place because of that. So it's a lot easier to add to a program than to try to create. For big move five, constructing better buildings, we. Our senior energy specialist and capital have modeled energy performance scenarios for new municipal facilities. Identified in the real estate and facilities master plan and come up with targets. So these align with zero. Net zero energy readiness and are often coupled with full electrification to achieve our C cap GHG reduction target and also our municipal target. So continued advisement on energy and emissions target for the new Chantilly Spire Hall, the Public Works Office and also the shop. It's quite a bit trickier with municipal buildings because they are far more complex than a standard house and they also have very specified purposes. So for example, the shop is a difficult beast because there's very large doors that regularly open and shut. So it it just changes the cost benefit analysis. And it warrants quite a bit more directed study and consideration. We are also ongoing work with our buildings department to offer support. It has to be noted that that our Squamish is really leading, leading municipality in terms of energy step code as it was implemented three years ago now. So not a lot of support has been has been needed at this point because they are moving right along with it. And finally, for the broad kind of other organizational actions, big move. There are a number of of larger kind of overarching initiatives that we are still engaging on. One of which is ongoing improvements to our website. One thing that we are working toward right now is relating the municipal energy and emissions plan to the to the public. There's a lot of important information on that and we're going to be spending a lot of time and money on it over the next few years. So it's important that the public be aware. Of where we are trying to get with that. Another initiative that we're working on is sharing resources for educators. So one of the links that we're leading teachers to is the Hearts in the Ice program. Mayor Elliot knows well, Suneva Sorby, a Squamish resident, is leading a very ambitious. and uh quite incredible project where uh she and another scientist are living in uh Spalborg, Norway uh for a number of winters and conducting citizen science, and they offer monthly phone calls to students. So we would love it if uh more teachers in Squamish knew about that and linked in their their students to this uh pretty exciting initiative. Uh, another noteworthy um project that we're involved in is the development of a G H G impact tool. Um, the way it's going to work is essentially um reducing um both vehicle and building um building, so a large proportion of our emissions are into a common language that is associated with functional units. So essentially, we're taking buildings and reducing them to to meter squared. We're taking fleets, reducing it kilometers driven. And then we're, we can look at the uh resource demand, uh, the efficiency of these and the G H G intensity. So in short, this is a initiative to help us to estimate the change in greenhouse gases and energy associated with different municipal decisions. So um, you know, a great example, as we heard this morning, um, may next year, having this tool up and running is going to help us to provide you with much better information about what the G H G implication of various decisions and maybe budget amounts uh would be. So we're we're excited to move forward in that. And toward the end of 2021, this should be uh close to to ready to go. So the one final thing we wanted to um uh to share with you today is uh we we've been making progress on where to go with our community carbon marketplace. And what we propose to do is to switch to the what's called the local carbon registry. In our opinion, this is a uh quite a big improvement over what we currently have because it allows us to track uh our G H G inventory in a credible way. And it allows us to um to um either create or transfer or attain carbon offsets in a in an accountable manner. Uh, this program also provides a platform to others to track uh and also add their G H G reduction targets to the registry. So one of the challenges that kept us from engaging in this program before is that it was not a two-way system. So that previously it did not facilitate the exchange of of credits. Uh, but in negotiating with the keepers of the system, they have agreed to allow us to add the function of transference of carbon credits. So uh a credit that one group attains, um, that is, that has to be credible to be on this system can be transferred to another account. So for example, the District of Squamish can get uh offset from uh from a local NGO that is doing an offset project and can use that to achieve carbon neutrality. The one thing that they're not able to do is to facilitate the actual monetary uh transference here. That has to help happen elsewhere. Uh, although a record of retirement will still occur. Uh, it's quite complex why they're not able to do that. Uh, one is, it, one of the reasons that they're hesitant is it will be a major increase in cost. Uh, it'll also, there will be liabilities associated with that. And also they believe that it is not in total alignment with provincial um priorities. Um, that is to say, they really don't want people going to offsets as their first uh as their first action. Um, the other interesting thing is too, is it uh it provides an opportunity for people to transfer these without the exchange of money. So kind of some some interesting circular economy uh initiatives might come through, people offering use of vehicles or land acquisitions, et cetera, uh, for for credits. So in short, uh, this um, this initiative, we believe it does comply with provincial government standards. It is credible, it is accountable, and it also allows for the transfer of credits without putting offsets uh for it is the first option. Uh, and it's also worth noting, there are lots of places you can go and buy offsets. Uh, and it's not, it's not our intent to try to compete with those. Um, we're just not going to provide the same kind of interface as offsetters or something like that. So that, you know, I don't think it's don't think we're gonna make headway on that uh on that any. So the image is just a uh an example from the local carbon registry. So you could look at a map uh and go find local offset projects, and then you can go to the project description, uh, read more about it, and then you can actually, uh, there will actually be links to the project documents where you can be assured that it is a credible offset. And then if you choose to transfer money or something else to get the offset, there will actually be a record of it on the site. So the offset is retired. It can't be, it can't be double counted. Uh, so that keeps things above board and is in line with provincial priorities. At that, we will conclude the presentation. Uh, we look forward to your feedbacks and your questions and your comments. Thank you very much.
Council. Council Anderson. Think somebody's got a mic on. I'm getting an echo.
Mr. Pickett, I'm tempted to dive into quite a number of these things, but they will after all come back to us in the form of follow-up reports or in other overlapping initiatives that we'll be discussing in the near future, but I would like to touch on a few. Starting with um number 1.2, I'll try to go by the numbering in the title, Improving Deconstruction Practices. Uh, there's an emphasis on permit process, policies, fees, structures, bylaw amendments, but one item uh uh topic I see missing here is we lack infrastructure for addressing construction and demolition waste. And in fact, the youth center success story only happened with local intervention of local entrepreneurs because the the contractor was from out of town to assist in that. Um, so we, we have had a private sector infrastructure proposal, a development proposal under review by our staff for the last six months. And we desperately need this to properly address construction and demolition waste and the opportunities involved. So that's just an observation that infrastructure, um, a sorting facility, sorting capacity, and sorting expertise, including at the site. Um, moving down to 1.3, passing a couple of quick observations, and this one concerns the forest industry characterizing wood waste in the area. The present wood waste lease uh operation uh near the airport, that lease expires on December 31st. And if we can't as a community find a solution within a couple of months, we will close down the forest industry. It's that serious because of the costs of handling this material and the lack of place to store it. And this is a very big concern, uh, which no doubt staff have heard. So the that is definitely a priority over assessing what's in the ground now. We actually are looking at uh putting at risk current forest industry operations, including First Nations operations and potentially a community forest. We, the the industry cannot work without the ability to address wood waste, which is 10% of every logging truck that heads down to the beach. Also in relation to that, and it is a question as to whether characterizing wood waste in the area will include construction demolition waste. That is municipal waste streams or I C I wood waste streams, if you like. So not only private sector, but our own municipal waste streams, whether we will look at it in an integrated way. Uh, and there are pluses and minuses of that, but that is done elsewhere in the lower mainland. Um, so I'll just pause there if you'd like, Mr. Mr. Pickett's, uh, oh, I will address just one more related thing. And in the next one down, 1.4, there's a a addressing again a quote enforcing construction materials separation at the landfill. I would suggest why not at the construction site? And isn't that the lesson we're learning all over the place is that that's the place to start addressing uh uh C and D wastes at at the source? So ha- having those comments, in particular, the question regarding whether we'll integrate a wood waste study with other waste streams. Uh, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Through the, through the chair. So our intent for the wood waste study is to focus primarily on uh forestry waste. A- as you are well aware, it is quite a uh specific industry, and we are going to partner with Forest Products, enter um the Forest Products Institute, I believe, out of U B C. So they are foresters by trade uh uh that have a lot of academic and practical expertise. Um, and our plan is to address uh deconstruction and demolition demolition wood waste through other mechanisms. And maybe at this point, I'll pass it over to Jeff Wint, who is uh uh who has a lot of experience in visiting sites and material separation and wood waste uh in case, in case Mr. Wint would like to add anything.
Thanks, Ian. Uh, through the chair, um, yes, having people source separate at the construction site, their wood, their their metal, their drywall is is definitely the most effective way to do it. Um, under our solid race bylaw that is required, um, the separation at the uh at the landfill is done through tipping fees. Um, so it's a a secondary measure to um to help enforce people doing that separation. Man, it makes it uh economically uh a lot better for people to be doing that separation uh at their construction site uh rather than paying the higher tipping fees.
Thank you. May I just offer the comment that uh the two waste streams are, have lots of overlap? And one of them is a chipping and sorting equipment that used to be used for forest industry operations. In fact, now at the landfill used by G F L at the northern end of the site. So that there could be economies of scale and sharing of equipment to be examined. I'll just leave it at that then. Chair, I have some questions on some other topics, but I'll I'll uh pause for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott, Council Penningill.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so just a question to uh maybe Mr. Wint. I know we paused um the enforcement of our bylaw around source separation for um restaurants, that sort of thing. And I wonder where we're at with that now that we're at this point in the pandemic.
Uh, through the chair, uh, we're talking to to local businesses, um, mainly the the food producing businesses um as well as hospitality businesses to make sure that they are compliant with the solid waste bylaw and and doing that separation.
All right. And given the changes to provincial legislature around single-use plastics, are we looking at reviewing or revising our bylaw in any way? So we have a single-use reductions bylaw. We now have the power through the province to do more than that. So I'm wondering if staff are reviewing that or thinking of strengthening our bylaw.
Uh, through the chair, um, we will be, or staff will be presenting to council in December. I believe it's December 14th on the uh single-use um bylaw um as well as some updates. Um, and then there was another provincial announcement uh a few hours ago today on the provincial government's actions that we will also be able to provide an update on at that point.
Thank you. Um, just want to brag that uh last week was Waste Reduction Week. And without the dog waste, my family of four produced 197 grams of landfill waste. That's pretty good for a week. Um, with the dog, it was 463 grams. It's a good thing he's a small dog. Um, so my other question, Mr. Pickett, is that we have students doing projects for us. So you mentioned the U B C one on on parking and storage. Uh, there was other, a master student that did uh some research on neighborhood nodes. Uh, but those, they're not being presented to council. They're getting to staff, and I'm really curious about that. So I wonder, is there an opportunity for these student-led reports to make it through to us in one of your updates?
Absolutely. That's a, to the chair, that's a a really good idea. I believe that they would be slightly terrified, but also very excited if they had the opportunity to present. Uh, and we will, we'll endeavor to do that in a, in a, a future update. I think that would be a lot of fun and and really valuable for both the students and and all of us. Appreciate the feedback.
Um, and uh, was at How Sound Forum on Friday uh with a number of my colleagues. Um, and I was talking about our Embodied Carbon Guide and and other projects, but someone asked me about uh retrofit opportunities or energy-saving opportunities for mobile homes. Um, so a lot of the regional districts have people with really inefficient um and not well-insulated housing, and they were wondering if we had heard anything in regard to supporting mobile homes with energy retrofit or insulation, that sort of thing.
It's a great question, and a lot of uh, a lot of manufactured homes uh also run on very inefficient heating, heating systems, uh, oil, et cetera. Uh, maybe I'll invite uh Karine Le Du, who has some expertise in this, if she wants to add to that.
Hello, through the chair. I'd like, I can answer that. Um, so yes, most of the retrofits are available to manufactured homes as well. Um, they are part of the eligible, for most programs, part of the eligible uh home types, archetypes that do qualify for for programs, both well, at utility, provincial, and federal level. Uh, there's proof of ownership for eligibility. Um, there's other things to consider with manufactured homes as well in terms of uh the home type, and if there's remedial action that needs to happen first, um, that's a bit of a tangent. Um, but yes, certainly manufactured homes are part of, um, they are eligible to participate.
Thank you.
Uh, Council Penningill, Council Herford.
Thanks. Uh, I did do the waste reduction challenge. I haven't had a chance to weigh everything yet, so I've got little piles of all the stuff from the week and the cats keep on taking things out and hiding around the house. If I wait long enough, I might do very well. But a couple of questions. My understanding is the original intent of the Community Carbon Marketplace was that it would provide funding for uh quite possibly for-profit startup businesses. And so there's an active element um in terms of what has ended up becoming one of our target sectors. Uh, it it sounds like from the presentation, though, that that's just not compatible with provincial policy. And so through this new, new platform, if anything, local, it's going to be not-for-profits exclusively. Just wondering if if that's correct.
Through the chair, that's a really good question. I think you are I think you are correct, and that is what this is going to push it more towards, that that transfer of money making that more difficult is is not going to be a big promoter for those. So it it's much more likely that it'll be not-for-profits uh receiving those benefits. It doesn't exclude for-profits, but it, you are correct in that it would not encourage them as much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the other um question I had just at the start of your presentation, I wanted to make sure I understood. It was something to the effect that embodied carbon and land use decisions weren't being considered as part of our uh C C A P, but it it seems that uh those things do come up in in a number of our conversations. And just as an example, we talk about um uh some of the timber products instead of cement, thinking about embodied carbon and so on. And you know, I know our, the I P C C targets and our emergency declaration don't exclude anything. They are all-inclusive. And so as I understand our C C A P, it it has particular areas of focus. It recognizes areas where we may do lobbying, where we have smaller policy influence, although we still have some. And I guess my understanding of the C C A P is that we aren't excluding these things. We are just focusing, but we are still, when there's opportunities, we are taking every opportunity we can get. And and so I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly where our scope or where our focus is.
Through the chair, Councilor Penningill, you're absolutely correct. Um, I made an error in what in what I said there. Uh, our C cap does in no way exclude those. However, our emissions inventory does not include them. So that number that we're counting and trying to get down 40%, if we address embodied emissions, that that value is not going to change. It's just not incorporated into our inventory, but it is still part of our plan. Uh, through the fact that things aren't in our inventory, by nature, they're less they're less evident in the C cap. Um, however, that's not to say that what is the scope of our inventory and and by by virtue, our inventory could change in the future depending on a higher level of government's decisions. Thank you for that clarification.
Council Herford, and then I'll go back to Council Anderson.
Thank you. Um, this wood waste project, um, the uh, are you consulting or or will you be consulting with people that have been working on this uh challenge locally? Uh, just, I want to make sure we don't end up at a a finish point of the project that's That's sort of the that that industry is already sort of exceeded. Because I know that there's some smart people have been working on this particular piece for for some time. So could you tell me a little bit more about that and sort of what the expected outcomes are?
To the chair, certainly. So the the way that this moves forward is they call it a sprint exercise in that they it's up to us. We in collaboration with Squamish Nation, we will come up with essentially an advisory group that will help inform it. And they will do a literature review beforehand. And then they'll actually be situated in Squamish for five days, working with that group and collecting more information. So I think through the nature of it, it is it is designed to be reflexive of what is already in place. And it is actually occurring in in Squamish in collaboration with with residents. So I do. I definitely agree. We the last thing we want to do is is recreate a wheel or completely miss initiatives or stakeholders. So we'll definitely be reflexive to that.
Thank you. Okay, I look forward to the the outcome of that work. I I'm curious about the there's some talk about the separation and diversion around commercial and and construction sites and so on. And a few weeks ago, we we heard about the challenges with recycle BC and contaminated in our recycling stream. And at that time, I mentioned that I was concerned about setting up a situation where the recycle bin is a is a scary place that may result in a fine if. And it made me think of our our landfill waste contamination level, if you will. And in this case, contamination would be things that could be diverted. And I felt in that in that particular discussion that recycle BC charging penalties and and so on, obviously made sense for us to to sort of take steps to recapture that. But seeing as we are the operators of the of the landfill, if 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 it was an organization, a hypothetical organization called landfill DC, they would be charging a potentially charging for contaminated load. And with contamination being things that are divertable. And I'm just consider I'm just curious if any consideration has been given to this sort of this sort of piece. I don't want all of the recycling because it's my concern is that all that are the progress we have made with recycling and diversion are going to take a step could potentially take a step back. If if people shy away from doing something that might result in a fine because they don't quite understand how it works. And I know on my street, just to take it as a as a little case study, there's many houses that don't put out a recycle bin. Never seen a recycle bin out. And there's some that I've never seen an organic spin. So to me, that's a bigger issue than, you know, than a beer bottle in the recycle bin, but there's a recycle bin out every week. So I I'm having a hard time sort of aligning those those things. And this seems like a a time to maybe have a check in with you folks around that, just to see what how that sort of concern is being considered.
Through the chair, it's definitely a it's definitely a fine line that we need to walk. Absolutely. Like, you know, if you can recycle something, by all means recycle it, but only if you're not out not absolutely sure. Then do you defer default to the to the garbage? I'll put Jeff Wynn on the spot again because he has a ton of expertise in this.
Thanks, Ian. Through the chair. Definitely, it is a concern, and we don't want to make an organic spinner recycling bin a scary scary thing for people. When we work with and talk with the the businesses and, you know, the ICI community in town, what we try to work with them on is that that idea of procurement and to be thinking of waste when you're purchasing things so that when things are coming into your business, you already know what disposal options you have for it. So when you're buying an object or there's a waste material from your from an industrial process that you have, you know which bin that's going to be going in. And if that can be all the way through your operation, it does make that a little bit less scary for residents. We're really trying to encourage people to use some of the tools that we've created, like our waste wizard, like the Squamish curb side app, which is available for Android and Apple phones. Please everyone download it. With that sort of tool, people can put things into their into the app to find out exactly which bin it it's going into. That way, there isn't a default for everything to go into the recycling. There isn't a default for everything to go into the garbage. People can be making those educated decisions and make sure that the material is going into the right bin. And again, with residents, that idea of when you're purchasing things, thinking about what's going to happen with that at the end of life, it's an important step. You know, when you're shopping, looking at the packaging of material, you know, can you buy things with less packaging? Or is that going to be something that you know how to dispose of? Trying to encourage people to to make those decisions while they're shopping can help facilitate and make that that disposal a little bit less scary because it's already been thought out. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And and what about and earlier when I I said that there's there's folks in my street that I haven't seen those bins out, there's they're in the minority to be to be clear, but nevertheless, it happens. So how do we motivate that where it's almost like an opt out of participating in in this project that's that's important to to us as a as a community, has financial implications to the community? And of course, has environmental implications. So, you know, how do we get that? How do we get that that buy in? And I hear that some educational pieces, but a lot of that's been working. So as we particularly as we started moving forward with the ability to find for the contamination, the recycling, I I feel like we're taking a stronger stance in that direction rather than there's these other areas where we can also provide some some motivation with the combination of, you know, measures, whether they're stick or carrot measures.
Through the chair, with the new curbside collection contract with GFL, one of the one of the the new things we're getting is a lot more data and information from them. And one of those is lifts per day. So with that, we're actually able to figure out which days, so which neighborhoods we're lifting, you know, more garbage bins, more organic spins, more recycling bins. From there, we're going to be able to do some more kind of targeted outreach to different neighborhoods. So, you know, we know that there was a day in, I think it was May, on on Tuesdays where we got the most organic spins. So we know that that neighborhood is doing a really good job of putting out their organic spins in the spring. We're seeing other neighborhoods where it's not quite as strong. So we're going to be able to do some targeted outreach to those particular communities that aren't putting out or sorry, particular neighborhoods that aren't putting out their organic spend or aren't putting out their recycling bins.
Council Anderson and then Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett, I'm going to refer to item 2.9 titled Exploration into Challenges and Opportunities Related to Parking in Squamish. And in the project description, there's reference to working with senior UBC planning students. First of all, I'd like to echo Mayor Elliott's interest and suggestion that the UBC student projects be at least copied to council, if not presented to us. But secondly, I want to ask, as we have been presented last week in our review of special projects for the upcoming or for the next five year financial plan, we have an item, it's number 82 in the 20 proposed for funding in the 2023 financial plan. Parking Utilization Study Paid Parking Scoping. So there's lots of overlap here. I just wanted to ask whether there's kind of integration of these projects or working together with engineering department, engineering department not being labeled here. But just just to encourage and just have reaffirmed that you're working together with that proposed project by the engineering department.
Through the chair, yes, absolutely. Gary Buxton actually met with the group of students just last week. And so we're aware that this is happening before a larger study. Part of the exciting part about working with with students is we're very open to to their ideas. They might come up with some really creative solutions that are excellent. They might come up with some really creative solutions that may not be remotely implementable. But we're really excited to to get their their ideas and to use those to to inform a follow up strategy. I'll invite Mr. Buxton to add on if he would if he would like. Thank you.
Nothing, nothing much to the chair, nothing much really to add, other than there's a very small number of us that sort of are the parking department, myself, Ian, Dave Marrow. So there's a very small group of us that work together on anything that's sort of related to to parking. We drew the short straw, so to speak.
Thank you, gentlemen. I do have one final question. I'll just be brief. It is actually more of a comment. It's in relation to item 6.7. Implementing Emerging Sector Action Plan in in bracket green economy. So this is oriented really a comment oriented to economic development rather than specifically your bailiwick, Mr. Pickett. But I'd just like to pass it on anyway. I'm concerned that we're overlooking, we have two groupings of sectors in our economic strategy. Core and enabling sectors, which are forestry, wood products, tourism, transportation and education. And then we have emerging sectors. And while there is some attention to issues for the core and emerging core and enabling sectors throughout the community climate action, I am concerned that it is being overlooked and that we keep having this emerging sectors, emerging sectors constantly in our drawn to attention. But we're overlooking the fact that there are that it is not difficult to identify high priority challenges and opportunities within the core and enabling sectors as regards green economy, opportunities, climate action, opportunities and challenges. And while there's lots of new fangled showcase initiatives that will come forward in the emergency emerging sector, that there's low hanging fruit and I'm concerned that that is being a little bit overshadowed. I think that tourism and its transportation implications, among other implications, transportation. These are fields of interest for our community climate action plan. And that and as much as we bring the economic strategy into that climate action plan, I feel we should need to address it in explicitly balanced way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott in Council Penningill.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions on the website. On the climate action website, you can't find our accomplishments. So what we have achieved from our CCAP. So it would be great to be able to show the community that it's not just a plan. We know that there's lots of action taking place, but the community can't see that really easily. Unless they go to, you know, our agendas or come to our meetings, which no one really likes to do. And then, Mr. Pickett, it is 20, almost 2022. There's eight years to 2030 and our 45% reduction. When do we take stock and see where we're at? And how do we do that? How do we show the community? You know, we said we'd get to 45%. We're we're a little bit behind the curve or we're a little bit ahead of the curve. And we can't really wait until 2029 to do that. So how do you see that rolling out over the the coming years?
Through the chair, that's a it's a really good question. And in our C cap, I believe we we note that we should update it every three to five years. So in my opinion, somewhere in the three year mark would be an excellent point to to really to really look at where we're at, to really look at how we're doing on our on our visions and our target in each of the big moves. And then at that point, it's also really important for us to recalibrate those targets in the big moves and if and how they get us to that 45% reduction. Because it's it's such a dynamic field and we're learning so much along the way. Just one side example is the the carbon emission factor for electricity in in British Columbia just changed substantially. It's it's still quite low. It's still orders of magnitude lower than the natural gas, but that throws off our our target. So we still have a lot of confidence in that by achieving the visions and the big moves, that's going to get us close to 45%. But that's something that is going to have to get re refined and reconfigured along the way. So my my opinion is that somewhere in the order of three years would be an excellent point to take stock, to consider maybe even changing the inventory somewhat or or substantially something like embodied emissions. If we want to, if we want to kind of take that on, if we get direction from other levels of government too. Yeah. So my opinion would be somewhere in the order of three years. I would invite Mr. Wickham or Mr. Buxton to disagree or to to add on to that. Thank you.
I might I might just say that I can't recall seeing in the budget line item for that review in 2023. And given that it's all coming back to us next week, it would be nice to see that in there. You know, I it sounds like it's something that costs money and we couldn't really do it just on staff time to review all those assumptions and and the calculations that went into that report. So if we're going to be doing this, things are changing so fast. And the province just announced its new 2030 goals and some new requirements for for 2030. So it would be nice to see that in the long term financial plan that it's there. It's there and the money's there to make sure we update it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Penningill, and then I'd like to wrap it up.
Thank you. And I just want to check with the chair. I I only had comments since the time to.
No, my intention was just to have a motion to receive and you could speak to that motion with comments as well as the rest of council, of course. So no further questions? Moved by Council Herford to receive, seconded by Council French. Council comments, Council Penningill, oh, sorry, Council Herford first, Council Penningill.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on on this and to everyone involved. There's obviously it's such a daunting task overall. It's been great to see it broken down into into steps and the prioritization of those steps. So yeah, I've been I've been amazed that the that's sort of the output and and the the lens that allows us to put over the various decisions that come come before us. So thank you very much for the work and look forward to seeing as many of these projects as far down the path as as we can in the in the coming years. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. A couple of things. Just want to start off by saying I'm very proud of the work we're doing as a municipality. I I see us leading much further and faster than other levels of government. And seeing that, I tend to push than where we are because that's where we seem to have the most success. And so I just don't want that to get lost. I do mention that sometimes, but I it is, you know, when I push, it's because I see how much success I have in pushing here. I see how much innovation and work and effort and attention this gets here. And so thank you to all of our staff who make that happen. A few things I wanted to touch on. I've been thinking a bit more because we had a variance where, you know, the new zoning bylaws and so on don't really apply. But there was discussion that some cooking with gas infrastructure might fall within the new incentives. And my understanding is that typically wouldn't sort of typically meet the new requirements we've set. I just wanted to check on that and highlight for me, the immediate emissions is one piece we have to deal with, but it's also the the longer term dependence on fossil fuels. And so doing what we can to make sure the infrastructure isn't there, that we're not getting new infrastructure in is something that I think is really important. So I don't know if we need to tweak a few things, but I I think that's something we do need to pay attention to. And just sort of on that note, I understand DC Hydro and Forest have been having a little bit of an argument on Twitter. And DC Hydro has been calling for us to task for their their claims on on sort of affordability and emissions and so on. And I think why I'm raising And I think why I'm raising this is I think there's a great opportunity for Ford to be a much greater partner than they are at the moment in in some of these things. And it's maybe a bit of a stick approach, but I think that the clearer and the sooner they get the message that they need to transition away to and the more they partner with us on these things, the better for all of us. It wasn't directly called out in this report, but I've been reading the regional growth strategy, our OCP concordance with that and so on. Regional growth strategy talks about high emissions industries like LNG and what we'll be doing for that. And it speaks about lobbying and advocacy. I think that is largely the focus in our C cap as well. You know, understanding that our policy tools aren't as strong as we like. We don't have no policy tools, but they are more limited than we might like. And I just want to make sure that from regional level and an OCP level, we're not losing sight of those, those tools. And I think that responsibility. And then finally, I appreciate the the conversation about offsets and that, you know, the desire to move away from net zero and offsets as opposed to true zero carbon. And I think moving to true zero carbon is, is where we need to get to. And so maybe it's sort of good that we don't sort of look at this as primarily an economic development tool. And just on that note, to the degree we use this new program, I hope we can focus on things that drive net new reductions in carbon. So, you know, if it's a a reforestation group that would be planting trees anyways. I'm not sure that really meets the threshold for me, and I don't know if it meets the threshold for this program. But, you know, if we're going to be putting buying offsets, is it truly driving net new offsets that wouldn't otherwise happen? And so those are my comments and very much appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, call a question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On this point, council or this agenda item, I've received word from our CFO that we should move to add monies to the budget for a review that was referred to by the mayor. I believe in 2023. So she would prefer to have something by way of resolution. Mayor Elliott.
So I'll move that we add monies in 2023 and 2026 for the update of the Community Climate Action Plan.
Your secondary, seconded by Council Herford. Any comment? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pickett. And we have one final item, council, number four, procedure bylaw review. Ms. Pollack speaking to this.
Can we have a few minutes?
We shall. Let's take five minutes. We'll come back at 4:57. Thank you and welcome back. We are on the last item today, procedure bylaw review. And before we get going, council, I just want to lay out how I think this should unfold. We're not here to debate particular notions for amendment. What we are here to do is provide staff with things that we think should be looked at for amendment and staff have some of their own. And so I'm giving you a bit of a heads up because my intent is, after Ms. Pollack presents several of the staff has, which may include some that you have, that I'll go around the table, starting with Council Anderson and just carrying around to me and let you put your thoughts on the table and then Council French, et cetera. And as I say, we're not here to debate them today. We're here to give staff a heads up. Staff will take these away, draft some amendments, which will come back to us for review and possible approval. So that's the format. With that said, Ms. Pollack, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Charlene Pollack. I'm the manager of legislative services. And as the chair mentioned, the purpose of this procedure bylaw review is for council discussion, review and direction to staff to bring forward an amendment to the bylaw. Staff are here to listen, take notes and provide clarification if required. I do want to clarify that section 6.81 in the bylaw refers to the two electronic council meetings and section 6.82 refers to electronic participation. I have had a few questions regarding those two sections. And I do have a few suggested amendments or items for discussion with council. So if that's okay with the chair, I'll, I'll proceed with these. Thank you. Okay, so the first one is section 6.82D. And this is just a really small clarification. But it does say no more than three members of council at one time may participate electronically at a council meeting or a council committee meeting under section 6.8. That section 6.82 should be added for clarification. So that's just a small point of clarification. Okay. And then suggesting inserting into section six, which is time and location of meetings. Some wording in the event that the power goes out. You know, we're, we're holding our meetings using the WebEx platform. So we should have something included in the bylaw in the event that this happens. So I have some suggested wording and this would be something if councils in agreement with, then I would include in draft bylaw amendment. So something along the lines of in the event that the power goes out, the meeting will be recessed or the remaining items deferred to the next council meeting if the outage is longer than 30 minutes.
Yeah, go ahead, Council Herford.
Thank you. I was wondering about not just the power going out, but that system going down for some reason. I've, I've used various systems in my business and sometimes the various one just goes down. Power's on, everything else seems fine. We've got a tech person running around and trying, trying to figure it out, but it doesn't meet that. So I think that that the power, but also something that is, I guess it's a bit of art to figure out what's specifically vague enough to that allows some room for, you know, the, the unknown. But if the platform goes down, then you know, we can't operate, but the lights could still be on and then we might run afoul of our, of our piece.
So I think what we're saying then is staff should consider system interruption, a broad term like that.
Through the chair, that's a, that's a great suggestion and I'll, I'll add some wording in for that. Okay, so the next suggested amendment is section 8.2. And 8.2C. So it currently says delivering copies of the agenda to the public libraries in the municipality. Since the agendas are available electronically and are on the website, it hasn't been the practice of legislative services to provide a paper copy of the agenda packages. Okay, and the next section, 10.8. Currently, the wording is that minutes of a previous meeting may be corrected at the time they are considered for approval. So I'm suggesting that we add some wording at the end of the current wording that says or at a future meeting if required. And that the corporate officer may edit the minutes in the event that a typographical error is identified following approval of the minutes. And an example of that type of error would be identifying a spelling error after the minutes have been approved or a wrong name. And the next section, 15.4. And this is more of a discussion item, but currently the wording is that the chair of the council meeting shall preside in the committee of the whole unless the mayor, council or committee appoints another member to preside. And our current practice has been that the acting mayor shall preside. So suggestion that that wording be changed.
Yeah, the only comment I have about that is that's the current practice, but I think this is my fourth term and it's been a little bit different each term because each mayor has had different thoughts on it. And so I would, my personal thought would be to keep it as broad as possible. And this is broad because it's the mayor that sort of set the system up. But I'll leave you with that comment.
Thank you. Okay, so the next section is 13.3B. So it currently says, so the chair of a council meeting may and then B, request a motion that the proposed bylaw or group of bylaws be read. And suggesting that that be removed from the bylaw. We don't consider more than one bylaw for readings at one time.
Mayor Elliott.
Just for clarification, are you suggesting that all of B comes out or just the part that says or group of bylaws?
Ms. Arthur.
I think that what this refers to is actually that when you read it in its entirety. And it has to do with reading of the bylaws. Some municipalities, actually, the corporate officer stands up and reads into the, into the procedure, the bylaw. And we're suggesting that we take that out. It's a formality and it's something that we just have never done.
A whole bylaw?
No, the, the name of the bylaw and some municipalities, I don't know if you are aware, but some have an executive summary on the front page of their bylaw. It's a paragraph that is a, it's, it's got a formal name and it's a, it's something or other clause. And they read that every time, like a bylaw to amend, you know, stopping at intersections or something like that, that, that thing.
And so, sorry, could you just repeat? What, so what is the suggestion?
The suggestion is to remove, oh, sorry. The suggestion is to remove 13.3B. Request a motion that the proposed bylaw or group of bylaws be read.
So would we take group of bylaws out of A if we never read them as groups? We're always doing them individually? Well, I'll leave, leave you to consider that. So we don't have to decide today.
Thank you. Staff will review that section. Okay, the next section is 13.9. And it currently reads a proposed bylaw may be amended while being considered for adoption, except that a zoning bylaw may be amended only to the extent permitted by the local government act. So our, our practice is if, if it's discovered that a bylaw needs to be amended when it's going for adoption, that third reading would be rescinded and an amended third reading considered. And that at, at the next meeting, the bylaw would come forward. So my suggestion is to change the wording there to be current with our practice.
Yep, Mayor Elliott.
What are the allowances under the local government act though?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Arthur's on this one. Thanks, I'll have to look that up.
Yeah, and just to repeat, we're actually probably not going to decide anything today. We are just highlighting issues. So staff will go away, look at these things, come back with draft suggestions. So it's a matter of highlighting the issues. And then I, what I did tell everybody when you're out of the room is that when Ms. Pollack finishes her several suggestions, I'm going to go around the room and turn for everybody to put their suggestions on the table, starting with Council Anderson, French, yourself, et cetera.
And that is it for staff suggestions. Thank you.
Council Anderson, you're up.
Chair, there is one thing that occurs to me arising from the staff work report. And I'll quote here, "In light of the large number of proclamation requests that are received, it is suggested to limit proclamations to requests from local representatives, which are not all of our ones we receive, or matters related to health, safety or the environment." Well, a case occurs to me of Squamish Days Lager Sports Association, which was recently involved in making an application to the liquor control board for liquor license. And the liquor control board specified that the organization had to have some resolution from the local government that this was a municipal government endorsed event. Now, traditionally, going back decades, the Squamish Days Association has made that request.
If I can just, sorry, if I can just interrupt.
Yeah.
That's not a proclamation. That's a letter of support.
A letter of support.
Yeah, so proclamation is declaring tomorrow, take out your garbage day or something like that.
So, Counselor Race, a, a proclamation would not have served the liquor board's interest and there would be other ways to address this. Okay, well, this is my interest is whether there's other matters besides health, safety or the environment that might need to be considered. And I'll, I'll try to continue to think about that, but that's what occurs to me. Secondly, we had a presentation from House on Secondary early in our term. And I'm going to go back and review the tape for that because the suggestion was made by senior staff following that presentation that we might be advised to review our procedure bylaw. Because some of us on council on that, they felt a little bit trapped in that the proclamation or a suggestion for resolution came forward. And there maybe wasn't enough provision for sober second thought, if you like. And we have revisited this several times and in that engineering department have, have asked this. Anyway, there's a little bit of research on my part I'd like to do as to, given that staff did suggest at the time and including a couple of my colleagues, that we need, need to review our procedure. So there was a, a case there. That's just for research. That's it for me, Chair.
Well, just, just to highlight then, the suggestion is, is to think twice about allowing proclamations off the floor. Is that the issue?
That is the essence of the staff observation at the time. A senior staff member did say this and we have heard since that maybe there, that there would have been a silver second thought opportunity would have been good.
Thank you.
With a new mic.
Thank you, Council French.
Thank you. Just a few quick thoughts. 15.4, I don't believe we need any change there. I'd like to see that remain as it is and keep that broad. 13.3, definitely would like to hear back from staff on just how relevant the whole thing is. Because it, it, the, the way I read it, both A and B seem to be practices that we just simply don't do. Could be wrong on that. So would love to hear a bit more from staff after it's been reviewed. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott.
I'm sorry if I repeat anything that you said at the beginning, since I was taking care of something else. Okay, hold on, I'm just getting to the beginning of the procedure bylaw. Can we include in section? Can we include in section six, under inaugural, inaugural meeting? The agenda for the inaugural, why can't I say that word today? Inaugural meeting must include signing a code of conduct. That would be my suggestion. Then I have curiosity about why notice of motion is near the front? And why not put it later? It's a rare, it should be rarely used if you've got a good dynamic going on council. And it can also really take your meeting off course if something gets put forward and you've got to debate it. And then you've got delegations and public hearings. So I would suggest we, we put it somewhere later. I think you already probably captured the consent agenda going earlier. Cause we discussed that last time. Is that right?
Through the Chair. No, I, I, I did not address that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Go ahead. I was going to put it on, but go ahead.
Yeah. So we did talk about that, I think, a few weeks ago. So moving the consent agenda up. And we don't do confirmation of motions anymore. I'm not sure. That's a hangover from a previous time. I don't even know what that is. And I haven't seen it in our agenda. So that's a flag that. In section 10.13E. No council member may speak more than twice to the same question without leaving the Chair, except in clarifying. The mover of the motion also has the right of reply, except in the following three circumstances. An amendment has been moved, the previous question has been called, an instruction to a committee. So does that mean it's been moved to committee? Can we just clarify the language there then?
We, we can. This is a parliamentary language, actually. It comes probably straight out of Robert's rules. But that's, we can.
Can we add an EG or like example or IE or, or do we have to use parliamentary language, which is not very user friendly?
We can make it our own, more friendly. It looks, for example, it would be referral to a committee.
Oh, and here's another one where I tripped over the language 10.18. When a matter is under debate, no motion is in order unless it is a motion to withdraw, to amend, to refer to a committee or a report, or to postpone further debate to a certain day. And the several motions have precedence in the order named. That last thing, I have no real, I can guess. But if I'm trying to read this to interpret my, my rights within the procedure bylaw, I actually don't know what that means.
That is also directly out of, out of Robert's rules. So we can make that more friendly.
I know you know what it means. You're a lawyer. But the rest of us aren't. So 10.25, again, I think find that language confusing. And then I would, I don't know where this fits. But I would like to try and consider language around the code of conduct. So that something like you're out of order, where the Chair can, you know, or a majority of council can find someone out of order for a violation of the code of conduct. Some way to further cement good behavior in our procedure bylaw. And I'll just put that on the floor for consideration by my colleagues. And I think we have to be sensitive to the fact that sometimes we're, we learn from other councils that there's, there's bully mayors. So they don't chair well. So then you need to give a bit of power to the majority. And sometimes the majority on council bullies the minority, squashing their views. So there's a delicate way we might need to address this. But that's your job. So I'll leave it to you to come up with that for consideration by council. The, around 11.3, we talk about delegations having five minutes. I just, I don't know if we need to capture this, but like today, we gave someone a much longer time at Committee of the Whole. We gave Under One Roof the chance to provide a longer update. So I don't know whether we accept for annual updates by community groups or, or at the discretion of the mayor, something like that. Just so we allow for that.
And just if I might, that's generally related to the regular agenda as opposed to Committee of the Whole, which allows for a broader, longer dialogue?
Thank you. So maybe that's where we capture it is in the committee section. Okay. Then 13.12, I think Counselor Race is going to speak to, that's a developer applicant can answer questions at first reading. Actually, I wouldn't want a developer speaking at a reading unless it's to declare a point of clarification to move the discussion forward. Right? Like if we're stuck and we can't get the answer and the staff doesn't have it, but the developer is there and they can say, yeah, it's 14 feet and we can move on, then that seems to make sense. Versus giving them the floor. So I just want to be careful with however we, we word that, cause then you end up with a sales pitch at your first reading and that seems awkward. And those capture my feedback. Thank you.
Counselor Bettengill.
Yeah, thanks. And I know we have a lawyer. I'd like to think I'm a lawyer sometimes. Just, I didn't. May not be, but so, and I know the mayor wanted to move eight C. But assuming eight C, just pretending that stays where it is, I thought about just moving eight, eight four S to maybe just around eight four C. So that's the confirmation of motions. When I had a look at this sort of thing, I, I think most of the consent agenda can, and I might prefer to stay at the end. It's just that, that confirmation of motions piece. And I think sometimes those are motions coming out of minutes, which will get approved later. But in my mind, there is a consistency there because a motion can still be different from the minutes. And so it's, it's that eight S piece that I think needs to move up. 15.4, which is the, the idea that the Acting Mayor chairs the Committee of the Whole. You know, it may be partly our group dynamic, but I, I feel that that specific thing has really empowered everyone on our council and really served to make all of us better counselors and more successful in our roles. And when I talk to other counselors that have struggles in their own councils and so on, they're just in awe of, of this practice. And, and so I do wonder if there's a way to keep it in. It's when you start to think about how, given the power that the mayor has to sort of set the Chair and so on. It's maybe tricky within the broader regulations to, to do anything other than what we have now. But you, you know, I, I think something to encourage or, or put that in, even, even though another council may pull it out. I, I think there is a lot of value in it, at least for, for some councils. The only other piece that I'm still not quite clear on is I, I just, with COVID and so on, just, you know, if four of us decide at lunch, we have a, a scratchy throat or something, to feel very comfortable saying, I'm dialing in today and not having that throw everything into a, a loop. Like, can we still proceed? Are we still okay in that circumstance?
Through the Chair. I, I think some timing would need to be established just with the notice requirements that we have. We are required, if there is an electronic meeting, to be open to the public and, and the public has a location to attend and listen and, and hear the meeting, even if council is not here electronically. I think this section, I'm going to need to do a little bit of research into this, just to find out, you know, how much, how much notice we would need to put information out, to put information out to the public.
Counselor.
Thank you. And I was thinking about this and, and this, this whole section, the, the sort of 6.82 makes you just think about, you know, what, what is a council meeting right now? And where do we want to go with it? Because in my mind, there were instances where we were, we were all forced to be remote. But, you know, we're back now, but at the same time, we're still using, as we look at these screens, we're still using the format that is essentially remote, but all in the same room. And I just wonder if some of the pieces of this really reflect the, the, not just the the reality of where we are, but also sort of modernizing the, this. I, I think that like, should we have those, should we have those, those blanket, those blanket limits in there for, for instance, is, I suppose if the quorum isn't physically, is the challenge, if there, if there's not a quorum in the physical room, then it's, then it's an electronic meeting. Is that the, the threshold? So maybe flushing that out of, of, a bit more? Because I don't really, as long as we have a quorum, I don't see an issue with the Chair being electronic. I mean, half the time when I put my hand up, the Chair is looking at the screen to recognize my hand. He's not looking, or he or she's not looking around the room to do it. So I'm, yeah.
Through the Chair, that requirement has been removed from the bylaw. So the Chair is able to present remotely.
So I suppose I guess the, the piece would be around the, the maximum, the maximum numbers. And there is some language in here as well that might be to your original, one of your original pieces was around the power going out and so on. But I think it's item I has some language around that, that we can rebuild upon for that other piece. They're, they're related anyways with this electronic participation piece. And now we actually need those systems to work for us to do any of the, even an in-person, an in-person meeting. So I think those things tie together. I'm curious to see if does that, is there a reason around the ma, the maximum besides just one counselor? You know, not wanting to face the public on a, or all the counselors not wanting to face the public in a public hearing or, or some sort of like transparency piece that way? Because I just don't necessarily see the, the prescribed maximum being, or the need for that.
So the, the maximum is, is for electronic participation. All of council can attend electronically, electronically. That is at the call of the mayor or the Acting Mayor, if it is considered advisable. So if they, what I will need to look into is the timing piece with this. If this came to the mayor's attention on the same day, whether that is, is okay to change the meeting to an electronic meeting, I'm, I'm going to have to do a little bit more research. But if it is very clear, I would say at least 24 hours ahead of time that quorum is unable to attend in person, then the mayor would be, or the, or the Acting Mayor would be able to make that decision to hold an electronic meeting.
Thank you. But the, the requirement for me was the maximum of four meetings to participate electron. Is that in?
That, that's been removed.
I'm so far, so far ahead and behind somehow. No, that's I'm going to relinquish my spot.
Thank you. I just, most of the ones I had, I think now are almost all covered. But, but 6.8 sub two, A, the member presiding at the meeting must not participate electronically. Is that gone? It's already gone. So in other words, B would have gone and C would have gone. D is gone. We can have more than three. I guess that's, that's still an outstanding question. And then the four is gone. G is gone. Okay. So that takes care of that one. 8.4. The notice of motion later makes sense because we never debate them at that moment. We debate them two weeks later typically. And it's just a notice. So that can be practically one of the last things in the meeting. And I've seen other councils actually where it is one of the last things. Confirmation of agenda, I think, is the Committee of the Whole minutes that are being confirmed. Or the Committee of the Whole motions, I beg your pardon, that are being confirmed at the regular meeting. Because they have to be, apparently. 13.12, which is the mayor's comment, read the developer. I suggest we could just delete. We don't need to say anything one way or the other in that. So I'll leave that with you. Proclamations was one I was thinking about. And, and I don't know which section it is, but Counselor Anderson sort of tweaked me to it. That we might consider and staff might consider giving us options around the scope of the proclamations. You know, are we declaring national bye bananas day in Botswana or something like that? Should we, you know, should we get into some of these national issues in a local government setting? Because are we really elected to do national things or are we elected just for local things? So we might consider putting some scope around that to, to focus more on local government or local issues. Plus there was others that Counselor Anderson mentioned, environment, and I forget the other two. But, but just some options around whether we let these things just go wild or whether we try to narrow them down a little bit. And that I think was everything by the time it got to me. Oh, there was one, I beg your pardon. 12.4, which is subject to section 12.7, a member who voted, this is on a reconsideration. A member who voted with the majority either for or against a motion, or in the event of a tie vote, it just is a member of council may, I think it should mean any member of council may, because we had that discussion last term. Because the usual rule, if it's like a four, three vote, then only the four could bring it back, plus the mayor. And the three could not. But if it was a three, three vote, because one person's missing, then any one of the six could bring it back for reconsideration. That was the decision we made last term. And that's, I think, what that's intended to mean. And there was, maybe I saw it in one of the emails, there was some confusion about that. And I think what it is intended to mean is that any member of council as opposed to a member of council. So just to clarify that. Oh, I did have. Oh, yeah. And so then the question is where that reconsideration motion comes in the agenda? So if I was bringing something back, where would we deal with that? Because theoretically, it's not on the agenda. And so you seem to have an answer, so I'll turn it over to you.
Typically, you would, would adopt the minutes because that's a snap, snapshot. Typically, you would, would adopt the minutes because that's a snapshot in time, right? We don't recreate the history. It would come up typically under business arising from the minutes.
No, that's fine. And, and I, I, maybe we can put language in there to clarify that. So people don't have to ask the same question I had to ask. So.
Thank you. Um, with that piece, it does say within 30 days. So would it still be, um, matter arising from the minutes, even if it was of past, matter arising from past minutes, if it, if it goes past another meeting? Does that make?
Yeah, I can speak to that point just because we had a discussion around that. Sometimes we don't have meetings in August. And so the reason it's, uh, or the next council meeting, whichever is longer, was to allow for that possibility. So it might be, for example, if there was something in July, we might not get to it until September because there are no opportunities in August, which would be longer than 30 days. And so that was the reason for that, that language there.
No, I, I appreciate that. My, my piece was just that if it was, if the spot on the agenda was going to be called matter arising from the minutes, but the matter wasn't contained in those minutes, is that, is that still appropriate? Or should that be cleaned up in this, in this review? That's all.
Did I miss you adding the section where someone pulls correspondence from the consent agenda? And then we have a section in there to deal with that?
Through the chair, that was included in the bylaw that was adopted today.
Good thing I read it.
Thank you.
And so counsel. Looking for a motion to terminate. Counselor Herbert. Mayor Elliott. And the opposed motion carries unanimously.